Led by Ellie Dillon tonight.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the first regular May meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Boston Spa, on May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Let us go to the multitude of minutes we have to approve here. Can I get a motion that the minutes of April sixth, twenty twenty-three special meeting be approved? Trustee Fundesa. Trustee Baskin, discussion. Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the April tenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting be approved? Trustee Cormos. The tenth you were there for, right? The twenty? Yeah, twenty-fourth. Okay, well, trustee Cormos made the motion. You're making the second. Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? I think it was the twenty-fourth you were at, that you were at the tenth.
Well, twenty-fourth I was on.
Right.
So you weren't allowed to vote.
Yeah, but the other one I wasn't at at all, so.
Either way, it's approved.
Sorry, still checking on.
We'll get the minutes about the minutes right eventually in that. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting be approved? No, you can't do that one. No, you're not a Cormos.
I'll make the motion. You weren't there. You were there. You were there.
Can I get somebody who is here to make the motion because there are only three of us? Baskin? Liz, are you gonna second or am I? Okay, Liz Cormos with the second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, with the three of us all saying aye. Opposed? There are none, and we'll have extensions by trustee Fundesa and trustee Raymond on that one. Mayor's announcements. I gotta throw in a couple little personal announcements here. First off, happy seventieth birthday to Ray Otten. And to my right, congratulations. It's public information right now, but our clerk Terry O'Connor is going to be a grandmother. Now for the real news, no, just kidding. We are, don't cry. Well, that's gonna be one lucky grandchild. I know that for sure. The May fifteenth milling fill starting of the Front Street Project, which Sean may have more on later, is still on for the milling on May fifteenth. May twenty-second is the aim date to fill, as in to pave it, and then striping thereafter. In between the fifteenth and twenty-second, what they'll do is see any defects in the milled surface to make sure there's no further fixes needed at that point in time. And so we will then attack it during that week, anything that's left. And we're getting very close to having Front Street redone. Obviously, not everything, but some very good improvements throughout. And I know National Grid was out there measuring up to take care of the sidewalk that they kind of sliced through to the, what is that, the west of the village offices? So there could be, I guess their policy is if they've cut into any panel, they will replace the entire panel in that situation. So you'll see some new old stuff going on, but at least the entire panels will be replaced in those cases. So that's good news there. That's all I have. We have a lot to get through tonight, so let's just move on to liaison reports, and we'll start with trustee Cormos.
My report's on the library.
Am I wanting to have microphone though? Look at you, you said.
On the library, specifically the friends of the library are holding their auction on May eleventh coming up. The preview starts at six thirty through seven thirty-seven. There'll be some speakers, and seven thirty, the auction starts. And there are some really cool items to bid on, including antiques and portraits. And you could get when, you know, you could bid on a weekend getaway, which I've got my eye on. So the other.
Don't toss sanders.
Weekend getaway, sounds very nice. And the library on Wednesdays holds their storing time as usual. And that's about it as far as news of the library, but please attend the auction.
Sounds like a good time for sure. On Thursday, May eleventh. Trustee Fundesa.
I don't have much to report. I've been sick, but I'm happy to be back. There's been some, Ben can probably fill in some more information, the Arts Committee. Oh, Arts Committee is working on some collaborations, trying to figure out how to do some collaborations with photographers. So there's some questions that they just have that we need to sit down and chat with Carla on. But generally, happy to be back. I'm sure I'll have more to report on E S D P A and other items next meeting.
Trustee. Now I'm doing it. Trustee Raymond.
Are you designs?
So in regards to D P W, they're doing their last big push to finish prep for front Charlton Spring Street project. They'll be pouring eighty-eight ramps this week. They also have some other pouring. They have one and a half catch bases to replace and a fire hydrant to replace. The, as the mayor said, there's kind of the mill streets on Monday, May fifteenth, with a pave on the twenty-second. And they're still flushing hydrants, hydrants on a daily basis. So if you see any groundwater, that's probably why. And we've also started to pick up the brush and the other degree first pass. And they're going to, you know, they'll be working on that when they have staff not doing other things. So just be patient. And they'll also working on a leaking valve and hydrant on the north end of the village, and we hope to have that completed this week. That's all I have.
Trustee Raymond, trustee Baskin, see that? You grabbed me after all.
I did get it. I did get an email. Screens. From Kate Ben, you're in the chair of the Arts Committee, and she sent me a note of what they're doing. She's saying we are, they're focused on getting their digital president, presence online and printed collateral done so that we can get the village art survey and photo map projects started. They've made contact with the plein air instructor and musicians at Brookside, so we're moving forward in those two fronts. And they are making progress on two library projects, the crafting library and, which is like a lending libraries, a little box of crafts, and also putting out a call for instructors for their crafting classes. So they're moving ahead on those things. Their next meeting is May seventeenth, Wednesday, seven PM right here in the downtown or downstairs library. And their questions are, make me think we might need a donation policy for organizations and people who donate to the village. What would be the standard, you know, recognition response for that? Because they are getting people to donate, and they're not sure exactly what to do and to recognize that. So that's something we can talk about in another meeting. In terms of the Park and Tree Board, they had a great event on April twenty-ninth. Caitlin, the chair of that board, sent me a note saying that Arbor Day event was well attended despite the chilly weather. Very special thank to the Cornell Master Forest Owner Volunteer Program, which made the tree donation. It's a sycamore moon tree, which means one of its seeds went to the moon and back. And it's a very cool tree. You should check it out. The bark is this dark green bark that is unusual. And it's gonna be a very, it's what, it's apparently the biggest, tallest deciduous tree that exists in North America anyway, so it's gonna get big. She also wants to thank Park and Tree member Christopher Williams for doing so much work to get that tree in place and teaching us about how to do proper tree planting and also helping to actually plant the tree. So it was a pretty muddy job. And let's see. Also like to thank Michelle. How do you say it? Beshered?
Beshered.
Beshered, sorry. At Waverly Square Antiques for doing such a great job adding two beautiful new trees to the Village of Boston Spa in front of their business on Low Street. She reached, she did what we've asked people to do. She reached out to Park and Tree and worked with them to make sure the type and size of the tree was appropriate for that location. So Caitlin said she did a beautiful job planting those trees that will be an asset to the village. So their next meeting is May sixteenth, Tuesday.
To further in that, actually, Michelle had contacted me because she was concerned that we're red taping things a little bit, and it was the first request that Park and Tree had gotten in this genre of what to do. There were two ginkgo trees, I believe, in the end. And working with Caitlin, I suggested, you know, in a situation like that, using email with her board to get more of a swift response so that property owners aren't feeling like they have to wait weeks and weeks to, you know, plant, especially since planting can be very time sensitive. And Caitlin did a great job with that, managing that. I think she's got a good process for the future on how to streamline and handle it. So thanks to Caitlin for that work and for Michelle to kind of raise the point, and it was a fair point to say the least. So thank you to everybody on that one. Okay, Jennifer, if you want to, go ahead. Well.
The mill, I'm looking at Boston Air Senior Center announcements. One thing they mentioned that people might be interested, Milton Mile Walking Path. There's an open house river cutting May eleventh, one PM at Virtus Kimball Memorial Park in Milton, so that's cool. And, and everyone's invited to that. And then they have a general business meeting Thursday, May eleventh at lunchtime, so.
Okay, no problem. Jennifer, if you can add the name that says E Three Energy Advisors, Peter Schmidt, that I'm seeing. And I'll say that a couple of weeks back, we were approached by former Schenectady Mayor Al Drizinski, actually, who is now with E Three Energy Advisors. They basically take a look at municipalities' bills and energy profiles essentially to make recommendations on possible money savings ideas and also things such as potential electric chargers for cars, et cetera. So we discussed some of the pros and cons that we're going through right now. And they wanted to just give a brief overview of what they're looking at right now before we progress to any kind of possible services agreement with them. Things they've done in a quick view of our energy bills in this whole situation. And I want to introduce, well, Peter, I will have you introduce who's with you right there.
Thank you, Mayor Rossi. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. This is Phil Caliendo. We also, we also have Rob Murphy. He should be joining remotely as well, if you guys could let him in. I'm just gonna do a quick introduction. Rob's gonna catch you guys all up to speed on, on what we did. And just really a quick, brief audit to, to see where we're at with, with you guys there at the village.
Peter, one second. We're just gonna ask Jennifer to turn up your volume a little bit with our remote control if it's nearby, but we're trying to get Rod in for you as well. And there's Rob. We'll give him a second to come on the line there fully if he needs to. And we are upping your volume. You're good to go. Hey, Rob, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. How are you, Mayor?
We're all good. Thank you very much. Thanks, Peter.
All right. So again, thank you for taking the time. E Three Energy Advisors is an energy consulting company. We're based out of Rochester, New York. We do cover a majority of the New England area. I'm currently in Plymouth in Massachusetts, where we're getting ready to kick off the four hundred million dollars the state just released in make-ready funds. With that being said, myself, along with Rob, and one of the owners of the company, have over two decades of experience in the energy industry. That, that's pretty broad, but the energy space is, is a very broad space itself. So what we've kind of done with a lot of things that have been done in a lot of ways that are archaic and old is we're really bringing up to speed some new technologies and other things to basically get us to a point where we can help you save on your bottom line. It's not necessarily about promising energy savings, but it's, it's about controlling your cost. And so that's first and foremost what we're really here for. And with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Rob so that he can pick up and get into a little bit exactly what that means.
Thanks. Well, we were able to go through the invoices that were sent over, so thank you for providing those. I want to see if I can, can I share a screen here?
Yep. We'll make sure you're allowed to right now, and I think you are on. You're on.
Okay. Can everyone see the, the preliminary finding screen here?
We, we also have copies in front of all the trustees, so you should be good to go either way.
Terrific. Just want to do, this is a very high level review of this, but overall, the initial findings were, you know, your utility is National Grid. I currently have thirty electric accounts, seven natural gas accounts with an annual spend of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on your overall energy consumption. So without diving way into the details, which I tend to do, what we do is really break down your entire energy usage portfolio. So every facility, traffic light, street light, we're looking at how it consumes energy because there's a cost associated with all of that. And so from this initial finding, we noticed that you were on what's called default supply service with the utility. So there are some market exposures there because it's a variable rate. Along with that, there's service classifications for each one of your energy accounts. We noticed there was some inconsistencies in those as far as what rate class you're on versus what type of account that it is. For your natural gas supply, there, there is a current agreement that's in place. There is an account or two that are missing off of that. Next piece of it is the energy monitoring. So every month you're getting a utility bill. And so one of the things that we do is basically benchmark and track your energy consumption. That is a foundational piece of going after a lot of the energy grants that are out there. As Peter had mentioned, there's a big make-ready program that's available for charging stations these days. There are many grants primarily through the Infrastructure Act that are available for municipalities. And we'd like to help you take advantage of those and basically get all the funding that you can for the village. That really ties into having an energy plan, which currently I don't believe there's one in place. And so that's something that we look to help you formulate and implement. As far as the solutions for these things, kind of just, you know, touching on, you know, what we just talked about. It's, we really put supply rate control in place. And so it gives you budget stability and allows you to forecast out, you know, twelve months, twenty-four months, and, and really kind of, you know, plan things out for the future. Besides the rate control, we also get into looking for efficiency measures. That can be anything from street up, street lighting upgrades to HVAC adjustments. So we really take a holistic view of all your energy consumption, and we monitor those on a monthly basis. So we're checking your invoices. And again, kind of going back to the, the grant identification, a lot of different things out there. So we'd look forward to, you know, really collaborating with you on an ongoing basis to see, you know, hey, are there different projects coming up that we can assist in an application process as well as on the implementation side? Again, the, you know, the charging stations are, are a big thing if that's something that you want to pursue. And so overall, that's, that's part of that, that energy plan that we'd look to develop and help you implement over the years.
Thanks, really. So yeah, that's, that's E Three in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Sure, we'll pop out from the sharing screen so we can see everybody in full size as we can. But quick question for you. What other local municipalities does E Three serve and what capacities generally around here?
Um, and recently and in the past, I've worked with, let's see here, Albany area Rotterdam. A couple of years ago, you know, basically implemented the same thing and started with energy invoice or the, the utility invoices. And I think in their case, we found about a dozen accounts that were being charged sales tax. So we went back to the utility, I think, twenty-four months and, you know, recoup the, the twenty-four months of back pay on the taxes and, you know, started monitoring going forward. Right now, we're currently engaged with the town of Victor, the city of Batavia. I've worked with the North Tonawanda and Western New York from everything, from benchmarking to helping them pass resolutions for solar permitting. And currently, we have a, an award contract with Wayne County. If you guys are familiar with Wayne County, it's just to the east of Monroe County outside of Rochester. And we are doing, and have been working on a countywide EV charging station in for infrastructure implementation plan.
Yes. I have a very simple question. How, how do you make a living? In other words, are you just a straight consultant or do you take a percent or what's the arrangement?
So, um, generally speaking, what we do is, right now, you're currently, as Rob had pointed out, you've got a number of accounts, the electric accounts that are on default service with National Grid. And then there's a number of gas accounts that are on contract with Merabido buyer as well as some default services. So those, those things that I just meant, mentioned, those are services that you're currently paying for. So you're paying National Grid a fee for, to purchase the supply of electricity. What we do is we work off of the same fee. In the case of the natural gas accounts where they're under service with Merabido, whether or not they're through a broker with Merabido directly, the fees included, it just goes to Merabido. So when you look at that, and if you're being served by National Grid, and you say, hey, I don't have any price stability, and I'm getting no additional services, I don't know really how to navigate the system or who to talk to or the questions to ask to when I call. So although I'm paying for this service, I get nothing out of it. So that's where Rob and I have come in and said, we can give our customers a lot more working off of that fee. And so basically, we just, we, we look for the contracts in place of payment on the energy supply, and that gives you an outsourced energy department. So nothing out of pocket ever for you guys. It would just be paid through National Grid. And National Grid would just be sending, you know, basically our margin through instead of keeping it themselves.
So you, so you provide the, the energy, the, the service. Your, your goal.
We, we help you go out and what part of, once we get through the initial step of going, doing, and like doing a twelve-month historic look, we'll circle back around with everybody, and that gets into kind of the plan. What are the objectives and what are the goals? Once we identify those, we're going to be able to decide what type of plan you guys should go on in the, in the future. Those are going to be through third energy, third-party energy suppliers called ESCOs, Constellation New Energy, NG's, a couple of them, Direct Energy, Merabido is one of them that you guys currently are using right now. But we maintain relationships with those suppliers and work with them on a monthly basis. So making sure that the contracts are, you know, in place, that there's any questions with the billing, we can go to them as well. But they generally offer a more competitive product than, as I said, default service, National Grid. The biggest thing is, and it is why I say we, we're not here to go out and promise you chasing after energy savings. It's, it's not a real thing. When we're talking with municipalities, it's about budget certainty, one hundred percent budget certainty. So all we're looking to do is to help you out year over year, your fiscal year, set your budget. We know what it is for the next twelve months. We're good. If we ever lock in and it may be high, the market goes down, we don't have to worry. We can still take advantage of it. It's not just gonna be in the current twelve months that we're in. It's just gonna be in the next year. Our budget's already set for this year. So that's where we kind of start to do it, but, you know, those products and what we get into, it just, it all depends on what you guys are doing moving forward. And without getting into a lot of detail right now, there are certain products that if you, for example, what Rob said, if you're gonna go and do, I don't remember if you guys have done your LED street lighting, but let's say you haven't done your LED street lighting, but we know that you're gonna do it this summer. But we need to get you on, on a rate fixed in so that we can do the budget. But we know that there's gonna be energy savings associated with that because the demand is gonna be reduced, reduced once you put those streetlights in. There's products that are out there that we can take advantage of. Once you guys have gone in, installed the street lighting, so that the next following contract, you're not tied in totally to the capacity, but just, basically it allows you to take advantage of that year over year. And I don't want to get too technical on it, but it's a way that we can help you with, to not leave anything on the table, maybe is a better way of putting it. You know, again, not, not promising any of the energy savings. It's, it's all about budget certainty. And you guys will have one hundred percent transparency with us. It's one of the big things that Rob and I have identified in the industry over the last twenty years. Hasn't been a lot of transparency. And along that comes with the transparency is the education piece. So if there's questions, if, if there's, you know, things that need to be explained, if there's things you guys are interested in, we're here for the educational piece just as much as we are about the benchmarking and everything else.
Yes, I thank you for coming on tonight to talk to us. Roughly how old is your company?
Twenty, we started in twenty eighteen. I did go off and do a little bit of a venture with Rob. We had another partner. That's actually what landed me here full-time in Plymouth. Then we decided a couple of years ago that it just wasn't working out. So we've been back with E Three full-time for about two and a half years now.
And the, you say you partner with different energy companies other than National Grid. Roughly, how old are those companies, if you can give an estimate?
Oh, they're, I mean.
New Energy is owned by Exelon. So I mean, they're, they're some of the biggest. They're financially backed, and that's, we, we look at all their financials, all the suppliers we work with. And some brokers, and not that we call ourselves a broker, but a lot of them will come in and say, hey, we've got, you know, twenty or thirty suppliers that we go out to, when, you know, we're gonna get a competitive rate. We, we work with a couple really good partners that we, we are transparent with. We know what we're getting from them. You know, from, they, they do compete, but we're not making twenty companies go and, you know, bash each other over the head for, you know, for stuff like this. It's, it's about the long-term partnership, strategic partnerships. Some of the suppliers that we work with, again, just like we're picking a product, there are smaller regional suppliers that can be more competitive. One great one in New York is New Wave Energy. They're based out of Buffalo. We won't consider them for you guys because they're not competitive in Zone F where you guys are. So they're just totally eliminated from the conversation altogether. It's gonna be between, you know, another one or two or three of the, of the other suppliers that we work with. But, you know, we let them out, and again, once we kind of get to know you and understand what you're looking for, it's more about pairing you up with the right solution for the long term. Some of the larger supply companies, like Constellation New Energy, they have a program that, if you guys want to do energy efficiency upgrades but don't want to pay the money out of pocket, if you're on service with them, they have a program that, that allows you to piggyback off of your invoices and, and basically pay with energy savings. It's a great feature to have, but may not be something you need if you're not looking to do energy efficiency upgrades.
Ben or Sean, anything on your end?
Go ahead, Ben. I just, I had trustee Cormos's question too. How do you make money? But in terms of natural gas, you're saying there are discrepancies. Can you describe what those are? What's wrong with our?
Give that to one to Rob.
Sure, just the, well, the, the main one is that you have seven gas accounts through National Grid, and there's only six that are on the supply agreement. Again, this was kind of a preliminary screen with seeing one month of invoices, but there's at least one gas account that's missing from there. As far as the structure of the contract, that's something where just seeing how it's set up, if it's a fixed rate, variable rate, what the term of that contract is. So the main discrepancy, though, is just the, the one account that is not on that contract that's an active gas account.
All right, thank you very much. Do, do most municipalities have thirty or more electrical accounts?
Every, every, every single customer is different. Every single one. You could have a small little town. Every, every, every single customer is different. Every single one. You could have a small little town or village. I think, uh, who is, I think it's Naples, the Village of Naples, right? Rob, um, it's real small, but they've got a massive sewer treatment plant and I think they use, they're probably a quarter.
Finish that off, Rob.
Yeah, I, I think he was going to say that they're, they're, they're about a million kilowatt hours. So they're, they're similar to yourselves as far as energy consumption size. So we, we do see that municipalities do tend to have a, a larger number of smaller consuming accounts. So it's, you know, again, that kind of the high level review, I mean, your, your biggest energy draw looked like the, uh, the streetlights, because they tend to group those together. But then you have, you know, a few like traffic signs that are, you, you might get a $20 bill every month for, you know, so, so low consuming equipment. And then there's the variable ones in there like the town pool where it's, you know, you're using energy maybe four months out of the year at that location. So all those little detailed things, it's really kind of, that's where we are able to put a plan together to make sure that they're being utilized in the right way and matched up to the best rate structures to control both the, the energy usage as well as the cost.
We were doing budget. Uh, we saw a number of, as we were going line by line, a number of either misgueses or overruns or oddities along the way. And I think it comes down to not necessarily monitoring, you know, department by department, what's going on or just lumping things together that we're not really aware that this is in this account for whatever reason. So would probably be good at some point here to get some, I think, consistency and understanding of what's happening since the energy is becoming such a large portion of our budget now, I think about close to 4% is what they spotted there on that $225,000 number. So real quick, guys, I'm going to assume it's going to be Peter giving me this answer. The next step should be essentially you coming up with some kind of services agreement for us to review and talk over with you and seeing what's next or what is next step?
Yes, sir. I'd, I'd send you over. We have a boilerplate pretty much professional service agreement. And, you know, again, the big piece is it states in there that what we do is we, we'd love to have a 25 year commitment because when we're doing a true energy plan, this is just how long we feel it takes. That's not reasonable, obviously. So we start with a, you know, five year term. And that basically just gets us going, but in, in there, there's language that's, uh, shows that we will take the, the signed energy contracts in lieu of payment so that it keeps everything out of pocket. For you, nothing out of pocket, sorry. But I, I can send it over to you so you guys can take a look at it.
What, 25 years? I feel like I'll be in retirement at that point in time. I, I'm not sure that would ever be accepted in five years, obviously a little bit more reasonable in that. I do want to say that, as it says on our cover page here, folks may not have seen E3 Energy Advisors LLC. It's a New York certified service disabled veteran owned small business. So thank you to the ownership for their service along the way. And we appreciate your time here and we will be in touch then about any that you want us to take a look at for next steps.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for the time. We know how much it is. Thank you.
Thank you all. Along with it, could we have a client list? I mean, who else?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. I've got, I'll send over, um, a one pager and we, a capability statement.
Yeah. Also references, please.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Night. Thanks, Peter, Phil and Rob. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Take care.
Okay. Let's see, next up is treasurer's report, which was included by Will State. That Barbara's last day was Friday and there is silver lining that she is still looking to help us out in terms of transition down the line. There is a motion later on tonight to sort of give us some backstops of protection with respect to what's next. That we have turned to the county to assist as well with respect to locating a new treasurer. And we do have one interview set up actually tomorrow and will be hopefully, hopefully moving forward, it was actually a pretty impressive resume, I'll say, for what we're looking for. So thanks to the county for an assist on that one. That's all I can say at this point with respect to that. Okay. And I just realized I did it in the wrong order, but the treasurer's report, uh, supposed to be for presentation. Oh, well, there we go. Old Business, trustee Fundanza, you and Sean both got a flavor of not being available for a meeting in person and, you know, wake the cause and you wanted to bring this up when it comes to illness especially.
Yeah, we, we discussed this. I don't even remember when at this point earlier in the year. As you can hear, I sound like Kathleen Turner. But.
Romancing the stone, what?
I think we, at the time, I think there was a little discrepancy in, from what people were comfortable with as far as what's an excusable absence that you're allowed to participate remotely. I think at the very least we should get, I don't know if it's a rules, I forget if it's just a rules change. Oh, it's a law. Great, great. Those are not complicated. But I suggest that we do move forward with some law change to allow up to, this is my suggestion, uh, up to two meetings that you're allowed to participate as a fully participating member of the board via Zoom. As we know, I'll just be honest, I had COVID. I didn't want to get anybody sick. I still participated online, just at least into the discussion. But there could be an instance where we don't have a full quorum and the business of the village needs to continue. So this is a way to ensure that. And Sean, glad you're here as well. You know, we're both, we're both back in person. So I, I didn't want us to forget about that part that we discussed earlier in the year. So I forget who brought it up last time. I think it might've been Ben.
I think it was Ben. He had been away last year and we were looking into when that expiration was going on. Carla, if you want to describe the yeses and nos when it comes to what the state is allowing, and I know the budget may have just expanded only slightly, what's allowed in there, would you like to take over on that?
Would I like to or are you directing this?
I'm asking nicely.
Sure. So as you, as you may know, you can always appear via Zoom. You could always appear remotely. However, if you're going to do that as a board member, you have to allow members of the public to go exactly where you are. So for example, this is always been a law. For example, if you're in Aruba and you want to appear remotely and you want to vote, that's fine, but you have to allow the public to go to your hotel room.
Yes.
To do that. So needless to say, most board members don't take advantage of that. The law with COVID, as you know, the law was you could appear remotely and then it wasn't, then it wasn't, then it wasn't, then they didn't know. Now, as of last week, when they finally passed the budget, what the state is saying is you can draft a law allowing board members to appear remotely and participate remotely only in the instances of illness and/or disability. It can't be, it can't be for vacations or because you don't feel like coming or because you, you just can't make it that day. About a year ago, last June, almost a year ago, last June, they did introduce a law that said that you can create any reason you want to to appear remotely. So they fixed that and now they've limited it because the whole idea is that you want to be in front of the people that you're, your constituents. So what we would do moving forward is I can put together a law and, you know, just there, there's model laws out there. Just identify for me, you know, like you said, two times or something like that. And I have not looked at the model laws yet. The budget was just passed last week. Uh, the state was a little late on it, but I'm happy to do so and put it together. Maybe for the next meeting, more than likely for the, one of the meetings in June.
So, so the law does not, the state does not allow beyond adults?
Or disability.
That's it.
Disability, I think was just added in the budget.
Yep. Yeah. Um, if you could ask or find out, does disability mean just your own disability or if you, or if you're, take your someone?
I can, I can look. I presume it's just your own disability because it's about you as the board member and your inability because of your circumstances, but I can check.
I would love to straw poll real quick and see if there's consensus for Carla. I, I'm assuming this is pretty easy work on because there are those templates out there. I shouldn't have said it like that. I, I was going to say after that explanation, who the hell needs NICOM, but got her to laugh at least. But straw poll, are we all good with her moving forward that when she gets time to do so? Yes, yes. And yes, and yes. So we will have her when she gets an opportunity to move forward with that. Thank you.
I'm glad, I'm glad you put this on the agenda and that we're moving forward with it because we've been talking about it a long time. It's a good thing. It might've been under, might've been under Mayor Fitzpatrick originally.
I think.
Well, I've done it again. I've done it a couple of times. But so good. Let's do it.
It was last June when it was brought up by the governor's office when they were talking about creating this. I brought it to your attention and said, what do you guys want to do? And it went back and forth and I was like, yeah, we should do it. And then it kind of kept going down the priority list. So now it's moved up to.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention back there. Very much appreciated.
No problem.
You do it well. New business. Um, this is originally a kind of a naked motion. So I wanted to bring it to the top because it had not been really discussed in this context before. It is the Village Events Committee. Uh, since it's Ben's motion, I probably should let him explain his intent. And then where we should be going from here, I do want to warn the crowd that due to the view that we don't allow multiple public comment sessions and meeting in the rules that there was a decided disagreement about the two minutes to speak part. So instead of doing that, we're just going to blend it in since there's no other new business here to the five minute public comment afterwards and just roll with it from there. I understand we go through, oh, technically P and Q, which you can't see because there are resolutions that are off page. So you may want to speak about multiple things and we get it. So at the same time, you'll have five minutes to speak about this topic. We have nothing else to speak about. Ben, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, should we move the motion to this section? And allow public comment so that we don't have to revisit the whole discussions a second time later in the meeting? I mean, can we just talk about this once?
Well, like, out of disclosure to the crowd, I'm not saying this to be cruel toward you or anything, but there were things that both Carla and I had flagged when we read this that need to be fixed with this from a procedural standpoint and from a, compared from what your intent was versus what we read type of situation. I'd offered you to take it off the agenda on Friday. You did not want to. So we're kind of stuck in this grounds right now where we probably should iron out whether or not it should be pulled and worked on further. But, you know, I, I'm willing to give you a kind of a starting block here to find out what concerns are, what to do with it. Ultimately, it's your motion to pull or not pull if it comes down to it. So I, I feel, I feel like maybe this is a good point where you could explain to the crowd your intent. The five minute public commentary comes up right after that and motions, obviously, board comments, questions, et cetera, then motions. So we're still in the right order of events here with respect to it. We can pull the motion to the top, the motions ultimately, if you want to go that way. So that's not all the way down and wherever the heck it is and wherever it is right now.
All right. Might as well do it right after public comment, but I still, I'm hopeful that if we discuss this now, we do not need a repeat, complete conversation when we actually are discussing the motion because that would be a long meeting. So is there a way to do that? So we don't talk about this twice?
Well, I, I don't necessarily think, what I just suggested to you is why not explain to the crowd your intent, give them their five minute public comment at this point for whatever they want to talk about, including this. And then we'll pull the motion up to A or where A would be so that we're, you know, still fresh with it.
I'll just be brief with my intent. We don't need like a half an hour conversation at this point.
Go for it.
Okay. So the, the reason I am interested in an events committee is for an official board events committee is a couple of reasons. One is transparency so that village members and the board and everyone knows who's on the committee and who's not on the committee. And that group is vetted by the board and chosen by the board. And that will thereby increase inclusion on the committee. I should clarify that this committee is not meant to replace the mayor's committee. It is meant as an advisory committee and I see the mayor's task force as more of an implementation group, which is excellent. You have a lot of energy and you do a lot of things. I think there is some conflict of interest with both needing money for ASCC and making recommendations. So I think it makes sense to separate the recommendation function into a separate group that's not seeking money for itself. But just making recommendations of how to spend event money in, in the village, which could include the mayor's task force and ASCC. So those are a couple of, just briefly, the, the transparency and also the inclusion to allow people beyond the current group who do not have the connections of the current group who may be interested in talking about, uh, and thinking about events and potentially helping to implement events that they could also be participants.
I think Liz wants to jump in. I saw her grabbing the microphone there.
I, I agree with Ben. I think one of the things that's been apparent is it would be good to have this events committee do the research, talk to the groups. We've spent way too much time on, on events in this board. We, we have other subjects that we should be concentrating on and to have a, a, a committee, you know, deal with the details is, is my recommendation.
This kind of also falls in line with kind of a process that, you know, I at least envisioned that we should have an official process to appoint committees that involves the entire board. And this is just basically another iteration of that. We were, we've done that with other committees in the past. We're, we're doing it currently with potential of creation of other ones. This is just more or less following suit with, you know, the basic idea is by having a structured system where you would fill out a form, express your interest and that creates a pool for the board to select from. And I think this is just, again, continuation of that ideal.
Ben, it's okay. It looks like we're doing it once around the horn and then we'll go to public comment. Maybe that makes the most sense. So for that, you have anything you want to add? Go right ahead.
Some of my concerns are, first off, in a, in a different sort of way, the arts committee was originally tasked to kind of oversee different projects in the village and when we were joining the board, uh, one of the things they discussed with us is that they didn't think that was their committee's role. And they found that it was something that the board should be taking on, those kind of approvals. Uh, it, it just created too much, it distracted them from their actual and we ended up as a board, we ended up changing, allowing them to review their own kind of policies and what they were about as the charge, I think, changed. And took that component out, which is very similar to what's being proposed. Other concerns I have are, what, what is the line? What, a village sponsored?
Does that mean items, events that you approve to take place on village property like the parks?
You know, I think there's some, you know, I see the intent. I, I do appreciate it, but I, I think there's some ambiguity. I can't say that today. Thank you. That I, I, as written now, concerns me to, to vote on this. Without, I'm, I'm just concerned it's going to impact a lot more people in an unforeseen way that we're not thinking about. So.
Okay. I'm going to reserve my own comment here. I think it's a good time to go. Okay, I'm going to reserve my own comment here. I think it's a good time to go to public comment if everybody's on board with that. And Anna's hand is already up. Reminder is always, five minutes and respectful and name and address if possible. When you start, we appreciate you. We'll have to turn that one on, I believe, because I don't think it's on. And make sure you speak right into that microphone. Anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak, I see one hand already, but please, others that may want to speak, this is the right time to raise your hand. Again, this is the five minute public comment period with any motion or topic you would like to discuss, including the one about the events committee. Anna, if you could be a second to turn on the camera. There she is.
Okay. Anna Stanko, 32 Kent Street. The first thing I would like to speak about is a rather sour thing. I don't know if any of you know, but directly across from Kelly Park, there are at least three to four pedophiles living in that apartment building. I have done some investigating. These are sexual predators with children as young as two and three years old. One of them that did live there now lives next door to me, who has been in Utica Psych Center for several years after raping a nine-year-old girl. I have done some investigating into this, and as long as they are a thousand feet from a school, there is nothing that can happen. I have reached out to a few people that have dealt with this type of situation for several years. I don't know whether there are any cameras at the pool, but that was one suggestion that many people will just drop their children off for the day. They can go in there, I believe, at eight or nine by themselves. So that may be a good idea. I would ask the board to strongly consider putting some cameras up at the pool to watch who may be sitting around watching these children. For everybody's sake, I mean, this disgusts me. You have no idea how bad this disgusts me and the fact that they're allowed to live right across from a park. That social services for you. They just put them wherever they can. The other thing is, I don't know who's in charge of the pool people, but if somebody could reach out to Kate Gauris, make sure that all of her staff understands that they're, what's going on and if anybody's sitting out there, it shouldn't be that we take that. Please, 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 please.
Are you willing to help us with that conversation? So they're aware of it?
Anything. I mean, I've notified all my neighbors. We have young girls, 10, 12 years old on the street. We have little kids, four or five years old on my street. It's, it's very serious. So that's the first thing. I'll get the bad stuff out first. The events committee, I mean, Ben, transparency, everybody knows who's on the committee. It's not, it's not a secret. There's never been any secret about who's on the committee. I look around to the people that are here on this committee. I see literally decades and decades and decades of experience running not-for-profits, fundraising and raising money and doing events. We are a good group of people that work very, very, very well together. No one has ever been excluded from volunteering. We ran Family Fun Day. And I can't even ima, I don't know how many dozens of people we had volunteer. We didn't ask them, how do you vote? What color's your skin? Are you a male or female? They called me, I put them in a spot. That was it. Nobody else cares. We work really, really hard together. And most of us last year were there from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I got sick at six, so I couldn't listen to the refrigerator. So I had to go home unfortunately. But, you know, it really just feels like a slap in the face. More overseeing, more layers, more bureaucracy. It's just not necessary. I did speak with Mayor Romano, who told me the first year that he started running events, there were eight to nine people on the committee that planned everything. After that, they had a good groove. And then there were three to four people. The only people I know were Meg Stevens and himself. I'm sure that there were others, probably Ellie knows other people that were on that. And he ran those events for 24 years. They were well-attended. The village loved them. Nobody brought up that we need to have more transparency, more people on the board. If anybody wants anything, all they got to do is ask. Give one of us a call and say, hey, I want to volunteer for the Birdhouse Festival. I want to volunteer, whatever you want to do. I know, I know Liz and Ben, you guys were both there on Family Fun Day helping out. Everybody's welcome to help. I just, I fear that you guys are using this as another political football and it's just not the time or the place. We need to come together. We need to do these events for the family in this village that can't afford these events. And to, to add another layer of overseeing, it just seems like it's just silly to me. But that's all I have. Please take the cool things seriously.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Lori. Everybody, as you come up, please be careful. We try to minimize, of course, the corner of the carpet area, but there may be trouble things. So look, jump over, over there. Make sure you talk right directly in the microphone, name and address, and go.
Lori O'Connor, 199 Milton Avenue. I'm new to the community. I've been involved in the community for close to 10 years. That's when I met my husband and fell in love with the Village of Boston Spa. One thing I fell in love with the Village of Boston Spa, it was a village of friends. And I stepped right in. Whether I lived here or not, I volunteered. I got involved. I met the people of the community. And I helped out at all the events. And now that I live here, I volunteer even more and they welcomed me into the committee. All it did was take me saying, hey, I got, I want to help. And oh, by the way, I have all this experience. Anyone, you're saying that you want more transparency. I asked questions when I was volunteering and they answered them. All you have to do is ask questions. You're saying that to make recommendations. I had some recommendations and I brought forth ideas. You say that you want fresh ideas? I brought fresh ideas. They implemented them. You said that if they, that they don't even need to be village residents to be on the committee? Why? I think it should be a village resident if you're going to end up with this committee at the end of the day. But they should be village residents, first of all. And second of all, if they really wanted to be involved, to fill out their name and volunteer and all that, they should have done it all this time. It just took me raising my hand saying, hey, I want to be involved. And they welcomed me. Here I was, just coming from the outside, saying, I want to help. Then they welcomed me, an outsider. And here it is, people that live in the village and you're saying, oh, they have to be on this special committee for oversight and this and that. It's, it's not that. Anyone that wants to be involved can be involved. All they have to do is ask. All they have to do is, is just participate. Ask questions. They're open. They're honest. Anyone on the committee. There's Republicans, there's Democrats, there's everyone. There's men, there's women, there's, anyone is involved. It's just people that just love children, that like the community. And it's not just poor kids. Or it's, maybe it's rich kids that don't have a good home life. Or it's just people that just want to be out and about that love this village. That's what this event is for. The events are for them. And I love this village. I got involved. I was an outsider. And now I live here and I just want to be part of it. And this committee that you're suggesting, fill out an application and we'll review it. And oh, you don't even have to live here. That's bullshit. It really is. And who selects them? You guys? And what's the criteria? Do they have to have X amount of years of fundraising? Do they have to have this amount of years? Oh, I did a dinner for 400 people and raised this amount. Or I did a family fun day in this community and this is the experience I bring. Or is it just, I'm a friend of yours? How are, what's the selection? All that needs to be spelt out. It just can't be voted on tonight because you brought it up and all that needs to be detailed, first of all. And it's really, really, truly not needed. I might be new to this whole thing, but I was involved where I came from. And now I'm going to be involved here. I might have just moved here, but I love this community. I've watched it from the outside. And now I just don't want to see all the work, the hard work that people of the community, people of this committee have done and built up, be shattered by micro-management of a committee that really isn't needed. Because they got it. They really do. And they have the support of the people around them. It's just, I just think it's, I just think it's pretty, pretty annoying. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Anybody else in the house? Donna Darderas. Just talk directly to that microphone if you can. And you are good to go. Name and address and go.
Donna Darderas, 64 Middle Street. I totally agree with what Anna said. I'm not sure we need another group. I'm going to tell you how I got on the group, if you want transparency. At one of the first meetings that Frank presided at, he said he'd like to bring back village events and was going to be looking for volunteers. I went up after the meeting and said, if you're going to bring back events, I would like to volunteer. Why? Because it's what I do. I was on the BSBPA board for a number of years. I volunteered at the ice cream social. I volunteered at the farmer's market. I volunteered at and actually chaired the village car show for four or five years. I volunteer at Proctors. I volunteer at UPH. I volunteer at my church's food pantry. And that's just some of them. And they're all volunteers. There's not one of us that is doing this because we're getting a big paycheck out of it, in case you think we are. If anything, it costs me money every time we put on an event. And the only thing I've asked is, please don't put my name up on a banner because I don't want people to think that I have an open checkbook for everything, even though I do for several things that I care about, like Brookside Museum, where I'm also a volunteer. A volunteer and a trustee. And I got on the group just by saying to Frank, I'd like to do this. I'd like to have, to give something back to my community. And when Frank formed this, I don't know what we're called anymore, an advisory committee?
That was, that was the original idea, but task forces, which you adopted. So we went with that, I guess.
And when he, when it was formed, I got a message saying, you want to be involved? I said, sure, I do. We had, we did breakfast with Santa. And by the way, the village was not involved in that. In case you think that's something we asked the village to help with, we did that without anything from the village. Ray and I sat at a table and checked people in when they came in. And it was posted on Facebook. And I got a message, I'm not going to tell you from whom afterwards, that said, Donna saw the picture on Facebook. So nice to see you and Ray working together. I said, Ray and I work together on a lot of things. We work on rotary projects together. We work on things for the village together. Our politics may be 180 degrees opposite, but we're united in our love of the village and what we want to do for it. We are not a political group. And I really feel that there are forces that would like to make it a political issue, and it's not. And I don't think it's appropriate. And I'm going to keep on working on this group regardless of what the board ends up doing. I might even fill in an application if you go ahead and move ahead with this other stupid group to be on that. I don't know. But I know that what I do, I do because I love this village and I love the, I've lived here for 33 years now. I'm not born here like many of the people are, but I do love it. I love to give back to it. And I wish everyone would make that easier instead of throwing up barriers to try to make it more difficult. Thank you.
I just want to say, Donna, you're one of the things that has made being mayor a true pleasure. You've taught me so much in a short period of time, how to be a better, not just mayor, but human being. And I would not have necessarily gotten to know you or that education without being in this role and without you stepping forward. So thank you for everything you do. Marilyn.
Hi, Marilyn Stevenson, 45 West High Street. Just wanted to remind everyone that the Boston Spa House and Garden Club is holding their 13th annual pre-order geranium and plant sale. We do this as our big fundraiser. It is to benefit the public gardens that, the majority of which we take care of in the Village of Boston Spa, the Pink Garden in honor of breast cancer survivors here at the library, the Garden of Learning in the, on the west side of the, of the library, the Tadisco Trail, and the Iron Spring Garden. And I don't know if I left anything else out, but the proceeds from this fundraiser benefit not only the public gardens, but what we do for youth. We do a senior scholarship each year at graduation. And we also sponsor younger kids for Camp Colby, which unfortunately will not be held this year, but other youth-type programming like that, including the, the books that we buy for the library year-round for environmental topics. The order deadline is this Friday, May 12th. The pickup will be the following Thursday, May 18th. It is a pre-order. So we have geraniums, petunias, and sweet potato vines. It's been a popular fundraiser for our garden club for many years. And again, this is to benefit the village.
You guys have a Facebook page too, correct? Just for those that don't know.
Yeah, Facebook page. And we do not have an active website. But if anybody needs an order form, they're throughout select businesses in town. And then upstairs at the library, we have order forms. You can fill it out, put a check in there, call somebody, send it in, get it in, but it's got to be paid for in advance. So that was the bright news. I do have two other questions that I want to address to the trustees and to Carla. The more important one would be, if you can just, Carla, update us on the status of where the comp plan, the comprehensive plan is at relative to the prescriptive timetable you talked about a couple of months ago. We've kind of lost track of that. I haven't seen it on the agenda. And I just want to know where it's at.
It's not tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you. I did not see it. I appreciate that.
At all. We were waiting for a couple of things on Friday. We had to leave just as she was sending it. We decided not to revise the agenda because there are resolutions that'll be off the agenda anyway that we'll have to read out. So it is there for that sidewalk as well.
And the final question for the trustees, just an observation. As the weather gets warmer, the traffic gets more reckless, gets faster, and there's a lot of kids out and other people walking. I'm just wondering what's going on with the pedestrian signs that, you know, you had a big effort last fall to get them onto the area around the school property. I'm just asking what's going on. I mean, I haven't seen anything happen in the last couple of weeks. I think it's important to get it out there when the weather's good. And I don't want to wait until school's out and then, you know, have to deal with an unfortunate situation.
Should see them this week. And also, we are making sure, we're working with Chief Bush to up our enforcement during the day as well to make sure that people are driving safer.
Yeah, people are still rolling through the stop sign at Malta Avenue and East Grove Street and Hyde Boulevard. They're just rolling through. And there had been a suggestion on social media a couple of weeks ago, post some more active, maybe hidden surveillance. It has to be done. It's happening during commuting time. It's happening during commuting time. And it's going to happen, you know, later on in the evenings too, as, as things start to pick up with SPAC and other things going on and other events. So I would just say, you know, knowing, I've seen it firsthand, seen it on West High Street, seen it, you know, hearing the squealing of tires just in the last couple of days, it's, you know, it's happening. So appreciate it.
Anecdotally, I was at the three-way stop of the fairgrounds the other day, which is the village. And I stopped heading toward parking lot, and somebody coming the other way across didn't even attempt to stop. Looks at me like I've got an issue of some sort, and I almost did, but I didn't stop. It is, it is ramping out there. Yep. Okay, anybody else in the house? Gina.
Name and address.
The 10 Old Glory Lane, Boston Spa, member of the events task force. Okay. I have to ask a question, and that's going to dictate which way my comments are going to go. So I know you're against answering the public, but is this committee being designed to oversee all village events?
The way I was initially conceptualizing it, it would be all events that receive village funds.
So that would include?
Not necessarily oversee, but be part of the recommendation process for where village funds should go.
So something like the BSBPA, Bark. Any, any group that receives funds from the village that wants to have an event?
Bark? Not Bark. Bark does get money from the village, but that's a separate thing that happens there. Like BACC gets money and seniors get money. That's different.
Are they, they would be covered under this?
No.
So it's just named it us?
No, it's named it events, events.
Well, that's what I just asked you. I'm confused.
So Bark is, is a service program for families and kids. And they have a whole set of events that they do on their own. So it's not for them. They have their own services.
Okay.
Makes sense. They have their own service.
I understand those too.
Support their services. They're organized, they're a nonprofit. We support their organization through our funds. Same with BACC, same with the Senior Center. That is not what this is focused on.
What about the BSBPA?
So if they are getting money for specific isolated events, then this committee would can, in my mind, and again, this is up for conversation, but in my mind, I conceptualize this as it would look at all the different events that we fund and make recommendations to the board about which to, to support. And so, successful events that have historically been successful, I'm sure that that would not be an issue.
Okay. And what about, you're talking about nonprofits and their programs. What about Ask?
Yeah, ASCC, as far as they do events with the village and are funded by the village for their events, then that would be part of the recommendation set that they would think about.
That's, that was, that was, that was double talk, Ben, because we're no different, 501(c)(3) than any of the other 501(c)(3)'s. So you're, you're differentiating, you're singling us out.
I don't see it that way.
Okay, Gina, I've got your registered as two minutes for the part, you've taken, part, you have three more minutes, just so you know.
Okay. Last meeting, I stood here, you know, like Anna said, we're being, we're a political football. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. I stood here before you guys last meeting, and I said, look, whatever it is, here's where we're at. We need to fundraise. Please do not interfere with our fundraising. No sooner did I get done saying that last meeting, Liz speaks up and discusses how we shouldn't charge for the birdhouses. You had no problem with the birdhouses being charged for by the museum, or anytime before that, but now all of a sudden, it's a problem. And then she went after the fact that we had thank you banners up in the park where the band performed and accused us of being campaigning. Well, I talked to Nikon. No, I didn't. And but your face, it was so weird, Carla. And looking into it, we weren't campaigning. We put up thank you banners, and that's how they're looked at. So that was a little tilt on what we were actually doing. Then I just saw something on Facebook last night that really set me off, and I calmed down a little bit before. But what it was, Liz, is you posted that we sponsor Skylyville High Middle School and Bird Hills High School with the birdhouse program, and therefore those municipalities should kick in. It's not up to the village to sponsor those schools. Is that correct? Is that what you put? I'll answer for you. Yes, it was. And I can read it to you if you'd like. The, what bothers me about this is you're spreading false information and affecting our ability to raise funds. You don't even know what the agreement was with Skylyville or Bird Hills, do you? You don't know the fact that we gave them what donated to us by Curtis Lumber. They built the birdhouses for us and returned them to us to be used in the village. False information. Harming our ability to raise funds. I'd like to thank you all for sharing our fundraiser on Facebook and for showing up at our fundraiser at the Speckled Pig. But the only two I can thank are Bernadette and Frank. You couldn't even bring yourselves to share our fundraiser. And the same thing with the Dems page. You, you share everything else, but we're the redheaded stepchildren that you kick around and you abuse and you try to get us to quit doing these events. And I'm going to tell you something right now. You can create 40 committees. You can create 100 committees. We're going to do us, we're going to do our events in spite of the way we're treated. Because, just because three of you don't like us and what we do, there are thousands out there that do, and that's who we're doing it for. So go for it.
Mark. Name and address.
Mark Leckton, Thompson Street. My concern is more about the mechanics of this committee. So when the Arts Committee was tasked with overseeing all the events, all, all the art things, which included banners and the events, basically, you know, I was supposed to vet everything through them. Well, you know, I mean, I deal with Jeff, Jeff Goward on a weekly basis. I do, I work with Jen. I work with, I bother Frank all the time. You know, can this, can we do this? Can we do this? You know, where is this? We need this picked up. You know, I, I deal with all these different organizations. And it seems like this committee, I would have to vet everything through them. And then they would have to ask that, that information from, of, so, you know, you're creating, the problem is, is that many of the people in these committees work full-time, and they can't answer something. And quite honestly, when you're throwing an event, you need information that day. You know, especially as we get down to the wire. And it was, when I dealt with the Arts Committee, it was very difficult. They're very busy. They don't know what they're doing, quite honestly. They don't know the mechanics of certain stuff. You know, they may be interested in events, but they don't know that, what the, what the load is on, you know, how much the backhoe can pick up, or how something can, needs to be built, or where is the electrical in the park, and how many, how many watts or volts there are there? And can we do this? Can, you know, you're creating this layer of, layer of work that will stymie something because everything is done, you know, in a, in a fire drill mentality in this village, quite honestly, many times. You know, Frank will tell you, I bother him all the time about mechanic, you know, questions about what can we do? How do we get this done? So creating a committee that we have to answer to about questions that come up at the last minute makes it, makes it almost impossible sometimes to get things done. And, you know, everyone at the committee, I talk to everyone in the committee on a weekly, if not daily, basis. And they all talk to people that they reach out to. I, you know, have people getting naps for us and getting, you know, all this stuff. If we have to vet it through some committee, it's going to take an extra week. I mean, when I contacted the Arts Committee for something, it took them two weeks to get back to me. And then their answer was, we'll get back to you. How do you want us to get things done if you keep doing layers of, you know, paperwork? Yeah. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Birthday boy.
Thank you, everyone, for that. I'm glad I made it this far.
I think you're from Middlebrook. I'll save you that much.
16 Middlebrook Avenue. You got that? I've got a few things to discuss. This, this committee, I think it's going to be very easy for you to fill the first committee because you've got eight or nine people here that have a lot of experience doing exactly what it is you're looking for, we assume, because we don't know what the criteria is. So if this group was that committee, and then you could have subcommittees of people to learn as you go along, so that, you know, you put new people in this, and I don't know how it's going to function. That's enough on that. They've said, they've said a lot. I wanted to let everybody know that the Rotary Club had a very successful cleanup day. This past Saturday, we had help from a lot of citizens, and we had Odyssey of the Mind, our world, I don't know if they're champions yet, but they're world competitors.
Going to Michigan State for the World Finals.
Yes. We had folks from the 4H that were helping us and Cub Scouts. We cleaned up a lot of stuff. We, we, no, no, we cleaned it up, but we didn't leave anything for the village to clean up. We picked everything up and balled it away. Next, you're probably going to not like, but I was just curious, Carla, have we got any more information on FEMA?
I'm not getting any information.
Oh, you're not? Oh, okay. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. So I still haven't heard of anybody getting their FEMA training. Has anybody done that? And I know you don't like to answer, but, well, yeah, you, I know, I know, and I take that back. But nobody else has bothered with it. So you're not busy if we have an earthquake, right? Because you're going to be in demand. You're going to be in demand. You don't have to, man. I'll be there to help you. I still got all those connections, but you guys aren't taking it serious. I don't understand it. And I wish there was, there's nobody here from Fire Department, nobody here from Police Department, except the wife. You're concerned, right? Sean, curfew reports. About a year ago, we were talking about the curfew in the village. And you were going to get reports from the Police Department as to incidents and all that. What has ever happened with that?
Well, I'm glad you bring that up. Yeah, I'll reach out to Chief Bush and see what he can.
Yeah, I'm interested to hear what the results are.
I'd be curious.
Okay. Reporting sidewalk issues. I asked about this the last time I was speaking. And I got nothing from anybody as far as, here's how you do it. There's nothing on the website. If we find a sidewalk issue, how do we report it? How do we do that?
We do have a defect form on there still, so that would be one place to start. We do ask that.
There is a defect form?
There is a defect complaint form on the website.
What's it under?
Forms, I believe, and maybe in the lower tier of the listings still. I'm sorry?
It's under terrorist.
Clerk?
I believe so, yeah.
It's under clerk.
Yeah.
We'll push it, we'll, we'll push it to the front page again as news this week, because we haven't done it in a while. This would be good to do it, actually.
That would be great.
But for others that are wondering the same thing.
It's right on the forms and documents tab, defects complaint form, the first one underneath.
Okay, forms and documents. All right.
Under village clerk.
That gives me an answer. And guaranteed raises for elected officials. I mentioned that the last time. And I think the answer to that was from, from Liz. I think you said it's nothing more than a cost of living raise. You get the same as the rest of the village employees. Isn't that what you? It's just a cost of living.
Basically.
Okay, so that means, that means that our employees are just getting cost of living raises. There's no merit increases. They haven't gotten any extra money for doing a great job. All we do is keep them up with inflation. That's it? Is that how that works? Talk to the mayor.
Hi, how are you?
Frank.
Hey, Brian, how you doing?
So how do we, how do we go about enhancing it? That's one way to keep your employees or gather new employees and
One of the situations.
Be different. They could get their cost of living. I don't have a problem with that.
One of the situations we noticed is that the general rule of thumb is going to be between 2% and 3%, depending on the year that raises were given, regardless of what inflation was. And the reason why we could still do 2.5% this year is because we overran inflation of previous years or the so-called COLA in those years. Could we do that perpetually if inflation stayed at 6% to 10%? No. We're hoping this is going to go away in that respect. When it came to the police contract that we were talking about later, they were an interesting case because realistically, the part-timers were getting way too close to minimum wage, and we were well below the market value on that. So they came in with a pretty high number they wanted in terms of percentage escalation early on. We whittled that down to something higher than what would be normal for everybody else. Your part-timers only 5% per year for four years. And the general philosophy is that we might make some of that back because we might incentivize new part-timers to come on board and alleviate some of the full-time overtime pressures we've been having in the last couple of years especially. So there is a method to the madness with respect to that, and it was back and forth for sure. But we're going that way. We're also going to a full-time officer approach with five steps, a step ladder approach to reward experience, even experience that's brought in from other municipalities, jurisdictions, full-time experience, that is, where they get one year for every two years that they bring in, up to five years of credit for an elevated wage structure at that point. So these are some new things we're trying with respect to the Police Department. Every department's different. Pool ended up with greater than 2.5% because they were, been chasing minimum wage to a certain degree and had trouble there as well. Fire Department has a couple of small personal services positions that were 0% by their own request. So I, I think unfortunately, it was oversimplified that it's 2.5% and only based on COLA in all cases. That's not the case, but more or less, it really came down to department by department and discussing with the department head as to what we should be doing in those cases.
Okay, that's, thank you for that answer. I appreciate that. What brought it to my mind was I, I was speaking with my grandson, who is a swimmer and lifeguard trained and all that. And I said to him, why don't you go down to the pool, you know, here, you're, you know, mile and a half rather than going up to Saratoga State Park? He goes, because I don't want to take a $5 an hour cut and pay. And that's for a 17-year-old kid in high school, you know? And he's making more than what we're proposing tonight to pay somebody that's going to be handling all of our money in this village.
That's by his request, and there's a reason for that, to be honest with you.
All right, it's his request.
Yes, it is.
Jamon Donnigan. Yeah, if we're offering somebody $16 an hour to, to work our books, you know, why aren't they making $25 an hour? You know, that's, I, I would tell them, no, you're going to have to make this. Sorry. You know, it's, it's crazy. Okay, that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
And thank you for the happy birthdays, everybody.
When Anna, when Anna was talking about decades of service, et cetera, I thought she was just talking about you and not the entire committee. Mary, go ahead.
Mary Price Bush, 105 McLean Street. Getting back to committees. We volunteer not for any selfish reasons or financial reasons, as Donna pointed out. She's always giving money to everything we do, but everyone else does. We go for the love of our village, and we are very, well, I guess we're grateful that we raised our kids in the village that has so much love. that has so much love, just so much community feel. And young families deserve to have that benefit too. And hopefully, our veterans, our seniors, our families with kids can see that we are a community. We're neighbors and we should act like that. So that's why we do what we do and we love it. Just want to update on what's going on with the different events. The Birdhouse Festival is planned and good to go. Family Fun Day is all set. Breakfast with Santa has received very generous funds and will go on. And we're not sure how. But Gina says the 9/11 ceremony will happen even if she has to panhandle.
I'm just trying to picture that with those boots on outside. Anybody else? Ellie?
Ellie Dillon, 116 Malta Avenue, Boston Spa. And I really didn't want to be up here. But the reference to the fact that the Democratic Committee didn't post the fundraising flyer, I really now have to respond. First of all, the committee never received a flyer, number one. Number two, we did not expect one because last year, after Family Fun Day, the town or before, during the fundraising effort, Family Fun Day, the Milton Democratic Committee voted to contribute individually to the Family Fun Day. We did not want to put our name on it as a group donation. But because of that, we received an email from one of the organizers that said they would no longer reach out to Milton Downs. And they threatened to go to candidates that were supported by Milton Downs to tell them we were not part of the community. And that extended, and this is what really bothers me, that extended to Ellie Dillon in the National Bottle Museum. And I don't know how that got thrown in. But that's how I feel right now. And I do not want our committee to be slandered that we don't support things because, give us a chance. We're a great group and we, and we will donate, but we will not be threatened. Okay, sorry.
I didn't say donate. I said you didn't share the flyer. I'm not talking to, oh, I'll take it. No, you didn't share because we didn't get it. And I'm not going to hurt you. Of course, you're right.
Anybody else in the house? Peter?
Pete Martin, Manchesterwood Court. Marilyn had a good point about kids and the signs. We have to put them up. Running stop signs at Eastern Ave and East High and Eastern Ave. We walk the dog. We see it several, several times a week. So I don't know what they can do, but they're not even stopping a little bit. They're just running by the sign. So it's kind of out of control. Donna, you said a lot of good things. Got to come together more as a community. It's not, Ben, what you want to do now just sounds like another layer of committee. And I asked the board, if you can listen, like, there hasn't been anybody that was positive, spoke positive about what you want to do. So the majority of Democrats, Republicans, it's not really a good idea. You don't really listen to the committees. I'm going to say it again. You really don't listen to the committees. The Ethics Committee about a month ago, you, you want, you want us, you passed something that says you want more information. For me, I thought you were targeting Ross's family, but whatever. You wanted more information. Julie, our chairman, wrote a letter saying, please do not do it. Everybody on our board said, please do not do it. Five to all, we've got Democrats, three Democrats. You passed it anyway. You guys vote three to two every time.
Just to correct you, nothing's been passed yet. It, it's just, it's not gone back to the version that I know of, that the proposed version is the amended version, if I'm correct, that you're working on currently.
So, okay, so listen, if it hasn't been passed, that's great.
Yeah, it's not been passed.
But I'm asking you, listen to what the committees say. Well, if everybody on our committee said, don't do it, it doesn't make any sense. Just like yours, that you propose now, it doesn't really make much sense to put another layer of people there unless you're going to put people here that want, that are already on it. Then that's fine because they know what they're doing. The Revenue Advisory Committee is going to start up again. Trusty Cormos, I have an issue with you being on it. I see you're up to be on it because I don't feel you represented our committee well at all. You, our committee said four to one, two Democrats, two Republicans said not to do it. You were the only one that wanted to. Pass the $50 fee when someone misses one order bill reading. That's a 50% increase. Credit card companies don't even do that. That's ridiculous. Why are we hurting our residents? There's no reason to do that. It can get lost in the mail, coming and going. I mean, we said four to one. We all told you not to do it. What do you do? You bring it to the board? And Ben, you did not vote on it, so you weren't here. I'm shocked that you said yes. I really am. It didn't make any sense. Think about it. The average bill is $100. You're charging somebody 50% more because it was one reading? And most people don't even know it, which is the sad part. It's really unethical what you pay. That's just not right. If I knew what an Article 78 back then was, I would have went out and got all the signatures and tried to put it to a public vote. Because I'm getting tired of, you guys are speaking three to two, three to two, three to two, and not listening to what, what we're saying. It's, it's just getting old. I have a bunch of, no, the energy thing. Got to be careful with that, Frank. That, I've had two, double, two energy companies. One ripped our church off by a lot of money. I got the Attorney Generals involved and we got our money back. There's solar. If you go after solar in New York State, solar is five, 10% discount. You saw it. Sign up now. Pro Solar Farms. I don't really know what this company does, but also, when he told me he had all these different accounts, you can consolidate the accounts and you don't have to pay all the delivery fees. So you might want to look into that. But you got to be careful of what you get. It's 25 years to kind of throw me off the book.
Honestly, this was the first step to begin the conversation. They brought it to us and it's like, you know, something we haven't really, ever really taken a step back and looked at. So it's, it's a start. It's no means even close to a finish line for any of that stuff.
And all I can say is, I was driving by Shaun's house the other day. I seen he was going to have problems getting to his house. They didn't have any operation. I stopped. They asked if he needed help. Your wife was really nice. But that's what we do. So Shaun, I'm appealing to you. Just try to listen to what we're saying. It, it doesn't always have to be three to two. You're a nice man. I respect you. Just try to. We've talked before about different kinds of politics and how some people's politics are. So please, just try to be a little overminded. I think we can get this to work better. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? We are going to go to Zoom and Jennifer, take it away.
Start just at the top with Kristen I. Hi there. Kristen Icalucci, 24 Chapman Street. I just want to say, I think the events in the village are just as important as arts, parks and trees, zoning, planning. And I think as such, they should also have the same formal, official village committee status. And that means open meeting rules and consensus support of all of those on the board. I don't see any reason why the current members of the Mayor's Events Task Force couldn't also serve on this new official event committee with new folks. I agree with Ray Otten. I think those on the Mayor's Task Force are doing an excellent job and they could join this official committee and help plan out events. So it's not a fire drill, last minute situation, as others have mentioned. And maybe even create subgroups that help focus on specific events and bring in and train new folks in an official capacity as an official village committee and group. I'm sad to hear that the folks on the Mayor's Task Force are kind of taking this motion personally. I think everyone in the village thinks you're doing a great job. And I don't think it should be a political thing. I mean, if it's, if it's not political, then why isn't it an official group? Why is it only the Mayor's group? So I, I, I think I'm in support of making an official village committee and applaud all of those on the Mayor's Task Force now for all they do. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Lisa's next.
Hello?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, so I have a long list here and I don't expect responses on them.
Well, don't forget your address, name and all that.
Prospect Street, Lisa Spideau.
Thank you.
I have a long list. I don't expect responses. And some of the questions have kind of been answered, but I just don't want to go through this quickly. Number one, what is the DPW schedule for yard waste? I, I, that was answered. However, I have had leaves and, you know, stuff I raked up out in front of my house for over a month now. Fire whistle. Last month was totaled up for repair. What was wrong with it that it needed repair? What is the expected timeframe to repair it? And here, operational again. And what is the cost for the repair? Cleanup day was a community event last year. It's non-existent this year. Based on a walk this morning, it appears someone took it upon themselves to make an effort to clean the Tedesco Trail. All the leaves have been pushed to the side and piles lining the edges of the trail and the fence line, broken birdhouses from previous years lay around, and no longer a trash can at the parking area and to the trail. Will the piles of leaves be removed or will they remain? Four, who is responsible for making sure the special moon tree that was planted for Arbor Day in Kelly Park will be taken care of and thrive, unlike the other one that was planted last year? Number five, speeding on village streets, which has been addressed. But Prospect Street with the hills and blind corners, more people are walking with the warm weather. We need more patrols to be stepped up for the safety of everyone. Let's see. What organization committees groups need to fill out forms to get them? And is insurance required for all of them? How much advance notice needs to be given? And replacing sewer infrastructure in Wuswell Park, would it be possible to include it in the plan of the infrastructure to be placed for a potential public restroom to be built in the future? If it could be made feasible and manageable? Meaning like plan in infrastructure for it and put it there. We're going to maybe use it, but have it there in case in the future it's there. Eight, item G, no more committees. I want to. Residents, when dealing with revenue involving my tax dollar, I want it to be represented by others that are also financial contributors. Outside shouldn't be deciding for me what they think is best for the place where I pay an additional tax above and beyond the town tax. Item N, too many committees. Stop the insanity. Too many and not enough being done to benefit the residents. Members of committees involving the use of village taxpayer funds should be village residents, not outsiders. How much of the other towns involved in projects contributing towards expenses? Why do they get input if they aren't financial contributors? What is the benefit to the village resident taxpayer? Ten, sidewalk code. How long are we going to go on and on about sidewalks? Nothing being done? And when the code is finally enacted, who will enforce it? Or will it fall on the parameter of everything else and just be words on a page with little, no enforcement? Number 11, can look behind you out the window. Flying the American flag. DPW is responsible for the rail, the raising and lowering of the flag outside the library. Why don't they? Sunday was the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service and flag should have been at half staff. They were not. Sadly, the fire department at the north end of town didn't recognize their own. But it is another reminder to give appreciation to the fact that our community members are putting their lives at risk as well as taking time away from their families to help others in their time need. Today until Thursday at sunset, that flag should be at half staff and it's not. The post office is to honor victims of the shooting in Allen, Texas. Respect the American flag. That's, that's, that's what this is all about. Stop for a moment and be grateful for what we do have. It could be gone tomorrow. Unfortunately, whether there will never be a money tree, it's not unvanable as some trees that's allowable in the village. And some have more than others. But it all needs to be used wisely and in a manner to benefit the taxpayers and residents of the village while inviting others in to benefit the village and not cause discord amongst. It's, it's getting crazy. Think for a few seconds what everyone can do as an individual to help make the village a better place. Work together, stop the back and forth bickering, judging, bullying and pouting, and act like friends should. We don't all have to be besties. But we need to be adults and work towards living in a safe, supportive, caring environment that is the community of the Village of Boston Spa. Thank you.
Lisa, two things. First off, I've got to give Jeff the, I believe you gave it to me, the text code for getting updates on the half staff flagging. Because this weekend I knew he was away. And there was a Saturday hit that we had there for fallen firefighters. And today it was after the closing time that I saw it. So we'll make sure it's taken care of. But I'll also make sure he has this on his phone because it's a good reference. Thank you for that. Number two, if you have that pre-written, if you could email it to me so that I could get you answers because obviously I kind of couldn't keep up with you on all 11 cases, but I want to get you answers to everything you had out there.
Okay.
Mayor@villageofbostonspa.org.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Dana, I believe, with her hand up there.
Am I on?
Now you are, Dana. Go ahead.
Okay, Dana Womer, 18 Coronet Away. Happy birthday, Ray.
You woke him up. It's okay. Jennifer. Okay, Dana, if you unmute again, we have not started your clock. Actually, resetting it now. Go right ahead. Now she's good. Go ahead. Jennifer, stop touching the buttons. Oh, Dana, you went back to mute. And go.
Okay, okay. So, okay, sorry. I just want to do a quick BS, oh my gosh, BSBPA update. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came out for our first Friday. Last Friday, we featured art in the, from the Boston Spa School District and also a few daycare centers from around town. They were in different businesses around town. And we also hosted the Odyssey of the Mind team from Malta Ave. They're raising money to get to World Finals in, at Michigan State. And I think they leave on the 22nd. So I do believe they're having a one last fundraiser this Saturday at Berkshire Bank on Route 9. They're going to do a car wash and I'll post the details on our Facebook page when I have them. I wanted to remind everyone that this coming Thursday, May 11th, the Friends of the Boston Spa Public Library are having a silent auction as a fundraiser for, to raise money for the library. You can start viewing items at 6:30. You can get the link to their website and the auction off of our website, which is boston.org. On Monday, May 15th, we have a ribbon cutting for the Gateway House of Peace Thrift Shop. All the, all things purchased at the thrift shop go to benefit the Gateway House of Peace. There are our BSBPA members. On Saturday, May 20th, the National Bottle Museum and Real McCoy, both BSBPA members are hosting a BYOB event, which is Bring Your Own Bottle. There will be trustees from the Bottle Museum on hand to look at your old bottles, kind of give you some information about them. If you have extra old bottles that you want to donate to the Bottle Museum, you can do that there. There will be a pizza truck and, or I guess not, a food truck and live music that night. Our first Friday in June will be, are actually our first movie in the park for the summer. We will be showing the movie Strange World in the park. So come on down if you have kids or want to hang out with us for the evening. And then we are currently working with the county to set up a Narcan training event for our BSBPA members at our June board meeting. And when I have more information, I will pass that on to you. That's all.
One thing I want to say about the Narcan events. We had three days of it with the county after they spotted the three deaths in a one-week period attributed to Village of Boston Spa. And there was three out of 19 in that week in the county. But all three were fatalities. All fatalities happened here. There were two people that were located, basically roommates or housemates that passed away. They were the first two out of the three. And we, it was a very hasty. And we had, it was a very hasty, you know, arrangement to get the Narcan events up and running by the county, Dr. Coles and Company and uh Phil Barrett, uh who's sort of opened park supervisor there, supervisor Ostrander as well. And Steve Bulger County Administrator, uh we we all banded together to get that off the ground. And if nothing else, it was meant to get people the knowledge that it's here, that these drugs, fentanyl, et cetera, are here. And we need to be ready for it, aware of it, et cetera. And one of the developments that came from this situation was I got a messenger uh note from a woman. Uh, I think two nights into it or three nights into it, uh, the Thursday night that week, who it was the sister of one of the men who died. And she basically had gotten three of the cell phones from that house. And was wondering why the police didn't take them. The answer is because we don't have confirmation for quite some time on what causes death in these situations, we don't have the rights to just take them without family providing them. And in this case, they abided by that and so explained, you know, basically, but that type of evidence which she did provide, uh, we sent an officer out the next day to grab it or grab the cell phones. That type of information may lead to help us getting the source of the fentanyl, et cetera, that is being sold to these people. And it is so key and important for us to do that. So while we did have people come out for Narcan training, including myself and everybody in the village offices, uh, went out there as well to learn and get a I cap. Maybe we didn't get as many people as we normally would if we had pre-planned it like Dana's uh trying to do with the pre-planning uh end statement there. But what it did do was give us a little bit of hope, maybe we're gonna find where the sourcing of this is coming to stop it. Cause it's clear it's coming rapidly through this area right now. And it's horrible, absolutely horrible what it's doing to our community. It's too close to our schools right now. So thank you to the county for helping us with that. I think we're done on Zoom. Anybody left in the house? Hearing none, let's go to the board uh responses, et cetera. Uh, whoever wants to start, go right ahead.
Um, I just wanted to address uh Hannah's comments about the um folks living across the pool. This is something I found out a few years ago from uh actually one of the sheriffs. But grew me in, I met him and he said, you know, do you know this convicted the sexual predator living across? And even at that time, uh Kate Dorries was fully aware of when I as a safety surgeon, you do, do they know? And as well as the ACC, because they walk down in the summer. So and I looked into it as well and given the way the laws are, there's absolutely nothing. I thought maybe the village could do something about prohibiting um uh individuals living, you know, across from the pool where they're children. Unfortunately, the answer is no.
Might I respond mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just one thing, it just came into my mind, something that somebody did suggest to me is perhaps perhaps you as mayor could reach out to social services and let them know of the issue and maybe they won't keep putting them in there.
If you, if you, if you could provide the right contact over there, I'd be happy to have that conversation. I just want to make sure I'm reaching the right folks over there.
I'll try to find that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just to touch on the the overdose deaths in our village, um, they're heartbreaking. Um, this is an issue I care about a lot, about getting Narcan training. It's really easy, I really want to encourage everybody to get it. And sorry, I'm gonna get very emotional. Um, I saw on social media a very unsympathetic reaction that Narcan training just enables people. But I want to encourage people to have a more sympathetic heart. Addiction is a disease, we're learning more about that it's a disease. Um, and not only that though, we can't help people if they don't survive. So please, if if there's opportunities to take the training, you learn so much. Um, I highly encourage everybody, like you might think you might never ever encounter that, but more and more I work at this, you know, the legislature and we've been talking about the issue of of addiction for many years, especially opioid related addiction. And it is something that has grown in communities that you never thought would happen. So, so please, when you see it and and I I hope we'll have more opportunities um to uh you know, get training in our village and um it's heartbreaking that it's children and just people that had futures perhaps and um so anyway, thank you.
The uh, that week, the average age or the ages of the nineteen overdoses ranged from thirteen to seventy-three, but it included from what Dr. Coles told me. A thirteen-year-old, fourteen-year-old, a seventeen-year-old, they did not die, but they were some of the overdoses in that week. And that should tell you uh why the average age was in the thirty-three range, uh, because it was getting pushed down by the youth encountering this and it is absolutely, as you said, heartbreaking and I couldn't have said it better myself. Uh, the appeal to everybody to get the Narcan training, anybody on that side of the table?
It's only like ten minutes too.
It is, it is. Done?
I I know it's not my time to talk, but I don't know if anyone remembers that Chief Bush had Narcan training, he arranged it for us over a year ago. I'm sure he could arrange it again for residents of the village and it, you just have to carry the little thing with you and be prepared to
It's now nasal, well, yeah, absolutely. And uh, he is, uh, in fact, he had just returned from vacation. Uh, and I got the call from uh Steve Bulger, uh, County Administrator and I was like, Dave, get in here and uh, so he was saying, yeah, we were planning on doing, but by all means, we'll help you however. He put an officer up there with them for any traffic control needed and everything else. So he's well aware and trying to work on this, he, this is something near and dear to him as well. And so he is going to continue Narcan training for the village, uh, that this won't be the last uh situation for it, go ahead.
Uh, would you suggest us reaching out to the county or whatever to do a, attend to uh the Birdhouse Festival?
I I think any opportunity you get uh to uh do it, you should do it, absolutely. And as Bernard said, uh, there has been this notion of, oh, you're just feeding the addicts with the knowledge, oh, they they might be able to be saved. Two of the cases that I'm aware of, Narcan was on the dresser of the person that perished. And that means that basically they probably had this mentality that they'd be okay, they'd be able to administer it to themselves. And the answer is no, you can't. You often cannot because you are incapacitated and nobody else is there to administer it. And so getting as much Narcan into the hands of folks out there as possible is needed. Uh, your neighbor, you never know what might happen if uh you're close to your neighbors, you see somebody on the street, just having it could save a life, it is that crucial. Ben, Sean, want to give you the opportunity?
Um, okay, I uh, first thing I wanted to address was the um, the question of the fifty-dollar fine for uh meter readings. Um, that actually has been an overwhelming success. Uh, it has increased um our data collection as far as people turning in cards uh dramatically. I mean, yes, we we've also gained revenue from people who've had to pay the fine. But a lot of those folks are well notified, they just simply refuse to do, to do it. Um, now, when the law was written, I believe there was a caveat in it that it was at the mayor's discretion whether or not to enforce the fine or not. Um, depending on a case-by-case basis, I'm sure if somebody didn't receive the card for some reason in the mail, um, you know, that could be a consideration. But obviously, if you received the card, it's clearly stated on that, if you don't read it in a certain amount of time, you're gonna get a fine. So um, I, I realized that, that that was not the consensus of the original revenue committee. But there wasn't any other recommendation provided to them by the revenue committee that would create an incentive for people to hand in their cards, so.
There was, there was.
Well.
You're wrong.
Okay, well.
And she didn't represent that. Um, and that's what I'm, I'm telling.
I mean, I I I believe it, it was a while ago, I can't remember exactly, I'm sure, I'm sure that the the board presented.
Okay, Liz, they're having, they are having conversation between themselves, let them have their conversation they want to.
Do not charge somebody after one reading, one misreading. Now, you're, you're making revenue on residents, which is not, it's a thief, it's not right because you missed one meter reading. It's not right, we said after two, charge them then, but not after one. And you're still getting, uh, she said if they get hundred people, then still turn them. The people don't even know that if they missed, they're getting charged.
I, I think, I think people aren't turning them in because they're playing the odds that it's cheaper for them to pay the fifty bucks than to pay their water bill.
They weren't those only a hundred dollars.
Well, for you, maybe, it 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 varies for everybody.
Not turning it in, four hundred a time.
So that was two sessions. It's about three to four hundred each time.
Did you say two?
Yes, I did. I explained it to you.
So we came up with another way to do it, she did not tell the board, she did not tell you.
Excuse me, I explained the committee's recommendation and then I explained that I personally disagreed with it. That I thought a fifty-dollar fine upfront. It was my opinion, I made it very clear that it was my personal opinion that I had disagreed. The board decided. I'm just one member, they said they thought the fifty dollar the first time because also it was less administrative problems for the staff to, you know, keep track of who didn't do it the first time versus the second time. So your recollection is not my recollection.
I beg to differ, that's a non-truth, you did not tell them that we said after two.
Yes, I did.
So, so either way, uh, a couple things just want to clarify here, uh, in Charlotte showing Sean right now. I I do receive emails uh administratively every period where this happens and I believe I have granted everyone because everyone has been a quote-unquote valid excuse, it feels like, I can't judge beyond it. But it's a, it's the one time, get all GL free card, we look at the history to see if there's been recent issues or not. I'm probably hanging myself by even going here because I'm gonna get nine hundred uh emails, uh, you know, asking for forgiveness and refunds on this. But uh, the the timely way to do it is right away, once you see the fifty dollars on there to let us know immediately because it becomes a major headache for everybody administratively. If it goes beyond that first month period of it. Second, um, I've got to say that it's been a pretty big headache in terms of we're chasing down the two-time, three-time offenders. It's not really resolving that first time situation at all. And for anybody out there that thinks they're saving money in the long run, here's what ends up happening once, let's say you do three missed ones and you end up with fines anyway. Eventually, let's say you sell your house and have a closing on it, the true water number is gonna come out. And let's say you use the water in the first period before some of these increases we're doing right now, the the five percent increase, for instance. Uh, and now it comes on this bill at a higher rate. We try to average it out because we can't tell what exactly the usage was. We average it out over the X number of periods, give you credit back on what your minimums were, but you will pay for that water eventually. And usually at a higher rate probably than you would have otherwise, plus penalties on top of it. So people that think that they're gaming the system and able to win it, you might win it for a little while, but eventually that card's gonna be obsolete and an actual reading will be done by DPW to catch up with the history. And you're gonna be shocked at that thousand to two thousand dollar bill that bite you ultimately in that situation. So be very careful, that's what your perception of the honor system that we work with here with those cards may allow you to do in the short term, because in the long term, you ain't gonna win. And so I just want to make that clear, not to take away from you on that, Sean, sorry.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think that's been pretty clearly stated and um, there is a caveat for that. You know, maybe there needs to be more public wit awareness, sorry Frank, but um, it's fine.
I get it.
But but um, uh, the other issue is, um, I know it was brought up. The board here doesn't uh historically always vote on a three to two. There's many where we all vote unanimously, many, many motions. Um, I do realize that there are certain subjects or motions that are have certain, have been contested and people have different feelings on. Um, I would just say, I, I always vote my conscience, so.
Thank you, Sean, uh, Ben, I think you were grabbing for earlier, go ahead.
I'm sure we'll get back to the committee stuff in a minute, so we'll talk about that right now. But um, in terms of the FEMA training, yeah, I've taken like FEMA one hundred, two hundred. If we all took FEMA one hundred, two hundred training, that's not gonna prepare our village. What really needs to happen is we need to have a meeting of first responders and um and make sure we have a plan and we know who's doing what and uh things like that. So I'm sure at the county level, they have those meetings regularly, but I don't know the last time the village had that meeting and so that might not be a bad thing to put on our calendar at some point. I don't know, Jen, if that's we, or uh, someone else, but um but that would be helpful to uh, again, when I was the director of St. Louis Community Center, that was an emergency shelter. We had regular uh meetings, but I I had to come up with an emergency plan for the community sale center. And so did other people and there was a emergency plan for the um town and village. So if those don't exist here, that would be a good thing to do. And it would be good for us to meet as a group and talk about what's needed and who knows what and uh who does what. And that would be a lot more useful than us each taking training, which we should also do, but it's not gonna make us some ready for emergency.
Uh, Ray wanted to just add something, I think.
My first responder.
Yeah, that's true too.
The point of those courses, then, is so that you understand the language is being spoken. You can go to one of those meetings and you're gonna be sitting there grueling because you're not gonna have any clue what's going on. You're not gonna know what they're talking about.
I agree, the trainings are important, they're good, they're helpful, but they're not going to get us ready by themselves.
That's the start. Yes, if you guys are trained, then you can take additional training. That's like, you know, handwriting one-on-one.
And what I'm saying is, the training is one thing, but it's not going to prepare us. We need also to do a meeting and a a planning series. I'm glad you agree. All right, I agree with that, we should all be trained.
Okay, um, so I reserved my comment earlier on and uh, this is my turn for, for comments, et cetera. So, coming out of budget, because that article gets written and there were honest assessments, uh, it was limited uh in terms of my quotes in there, as I've said to others. Um, Mark was quoted in the article about uh the event side of it, the S side of it and the underfunding that they feel that happened, I feel is there too. And the gaps that had been made up anyway, on top of the gaps that may have been created by underfunding to a certain degree, we can all debate here what it is or isn't. But once that budget was passed and once, you know, the article moved forward, the correct thing realistically to do for all of us is to work together to start making up those gaps. And I just want to thank the community first off, because the number of responses I got personally was incredible in terms of either I want to send money or I want to help out and be part of uh the group. And we passed all those uh pieces to Gina, Mark, Mary, et cetera, out there to make sure that folks were able to find out how to sign up, everything else. So to the community, you have really outdone yourself in just the initial response to that and we do appreciate that. What really wasn't necessary was the level of negativity that decided to follow what Ryan Johnson shared on All Things Boston Spa. Because it undermined the situation and Gina's correct, she did sit there last time and say, stop undermining fundraising at this point, it's not our role to undermine it if we're, we all want to see these events happen. If you are behind these events, at this point, the thing to do is do whatever you can to fundraise, to support, to sign up yourself if you want, et cetera. It was so unnecessary that that stuff and I was disappointed in seeing that. And so I bristled at it, I tried to respond a little bit uh here and there, but I I was more sitting back, trying to stay positive on my own page and be disappointed in the whole thing. Then the committee charter and proposal came through and Ben, as you know, and I read And Ben, as you know, and I read, the first person I reached out to in front of all of us was Dana from BSBPA because the first thing I thought wasn't even one of the normal events. It was holiday parade. We just went through a budget where we give $1,500 toward the holiday parade for BSBPA. So, when you say village-sponsored event, $1,500 to sponsorship for that village event that's community-wide, that would become part of the microscope here, or whatever you want to call it. And so, in and of itself, and Carla and I have had this discussion quite a bit in the last week. Events committees are pretty common throughout municipalities. The problem that they've come is, in a situation like this, it's all politically motivated and fueled. We know it at this point. Every time we try to get something through for funding for an event, now that COVID's over, we're trying to get this community back off the ground over the last year, it's been a fight after a fight, after a fight, after a fight. And it's so unnecessary. Every time, the grandstanding, and I'm guilty of it too, I get it. I'm sorry for that fact. But I also am protective of the community right now and the more time I spend up at schools, the more I realize how it affects this area, how important it is to folks around here. And so, there was a back and forth about what the intention was or wasn't. And here's my thought. If the question was just how to fund these things to basically be a budget advisory committee at the end of the day, which we've had in the past, then, you know what? I don't think it's the most horrible thing in the world so that there's certainty ultimately. Maybe as Carla suggested from other municipalities, you pick four events that are village events that are overseen by this master committee. And that's it. And anything else that gets done, anybody else that wants to come along to do the next events can do those events on their own. Sign up, get their mass gathering and permit stuff all together and everything else. And I learned a lot from Carla. I, I haven't talked to Wade about trauma, I swear, in quite some time, so. But it, it's useful information because, Ben, at the heart of it, if we limit it to something like that, I'd be behind it. Do I want to sit here and fill out what they get in terms of events and then have to sit here and be told, you're in nepotism and you're doing this and it's your sister and your friend and they voted for you or helped you and everything else? No, hell no, I don't. No, no, I don't want to be exposed to this constantly. It's bull. What Lori said. But realistically, I don't want that exposure for myself, for them, or anybody else. It's hellacious. It's unnecessary and at the end of the day, it undermines the events. It undermines the community. So, my request, as I said Friday, but I'm going to make the appeal publicly now, is let's go back to the drawing board. Let's go to the folks that are doing the events and say, how would you, if it's a foregone conclusion, we're going to have an events committee of some sort or something to, in this line, what can we do? What would be a good idea? So, it's not clipping your wings in a way that makes it impossible to act, but at the same time meets what you need ultimately, which is less focus on an annual appropriation scenario that was playing out in a way that you didn't like, I didn't like, or anybody else liked at, at that point. Nobody liked it. So, there's something we can learn from this process if we let ourselves, or we can turn it into this toxic situation where it's going to be politically motivated and we all go select politically motivated people and this whole thing. And it doesn't succeed in helping what the intent is, which is to help events have some kind of consistency, continuity and funding at the heart of it. So, that's my challenge here to you. Would you like to withdraw the motion for now to work on it with folks that you may not have worked with before, that are willing to work with you, I think, if you came to them in earnest at this point, say, how would you handle it?
Well, I guess we're at the, at the point where we make the motion and then discuss it.
Well, I'm not going to name the motion if we're going to just dispense with it. That's why I'm bringing up.
I don't want to dispense with it because I think the, the concept that you framed can fit within this charter and we can tweak the charter, but based on that. What?
You're going to tweak it live right now? That's the point.
If there's anything that we can do now, yes, we would do that now.
I don't encourage that.
Well, I submitted this several days ago or a week ago.
Well.
So, Carla, you said there was something about the open meetings paragraph that needed tweaking. All right. You know what? Let's, let's do the motion and we'll talk about, we'll discuss it and talk about the charter. So, I'm going to make a motion to create.
I'm going to motion the property owner for the property located at 40 Glen Street, be given permission to tap.
Frank, we said we would do this first.
It's a hack with it at this point, but it's going to take the rest of the night. Let's get our business done.
We said we would do this first, right? You said we would do this first.
Ben, I just gave you an opportunity.
Do this first.
I gave you an opportunity to do.
Frank, you said at the beginning of the meeting, we would move this up, do it first. Was your intention just to do away with it? Because that was not what you said.
It needs to be fixed and I told you from the start, we're not doing it in real time in the meeting, wasting everybody's time. Are we really going on this?
Mayor, he's correct. You said this would be done first.
Yeah. You know what, Liz? At this point, I, let's get, let's get the work done of the village and then we'll go back to this at the end.
I think we can reach a compromise even with the charter and even with maybe a little tweaking here and there, and I'm open to that.
Why are you afraid to work with the people I just suggested actually going up to?
I'm willing to work with you, Frank.
I am not the person that puts on the mantle. No, I'm not. I just told you that you are. Mary looks like a nice enough person. Have you ever dealt with her?
Mary, are you running for election this year? Because is that why you're being, you're now going forward? This whole thing is.
That's an inappropriate question. So, hold on, hold on.
I just wanted to say. The whole thing is political. And if you, if you pretend it's not, if you pretend it's not, you are lying.
What I was asking.
It is all political and you are political and you are political and Frank, you are political.
Ben, hold on guys, hold on. What I was suggesting, Ben, because there's tweaking that needs to be done, I, I just figured, let's talk about it, like offline. I don't think that we should be tweaking it in public. That's, that's my simple request. There's some concerns I have that I think needs more.
Well, let's, I'd like to hear that. I would, so.
I outlined them. What does village-sponsored community events, the way it's written is so vague. And I don't know, again, I would prefer to deal with it after we get our motion.
Say, village-sponsored means events at which village funds are used.
So, that could mean a number of things. People that use our electricity, people that use our staff for assistance. So, I think this is, this is problematic. I, again, I understand your intent, but I, I said, I, I'm concerned that this would impact far more than just the, the village events that you were, you know, intending for this to, you know, work on. This could impact everybody, basically, every organization.
Then we say village budget, budget funds or.
Our electricity is paid by our budget.
What?
Our electricity.
Funds means money. What you're talking about, Bernadette, is services.
Village sponsored, that's not what you wrote. So, again, my point is that as written, I, this is, I think, not addressing exactly what your intent is. I think it's broader than you realize, so.
We've been pointing out all week for you to say that we haven't been pointing this out is disingenuous, which you know exactly what I've been telling you all week and it's like, you're not listening. You're not listening.
You don't want the committee, Frank, so.
Ben, I just offered the idea of what to, what would be very agreeable based on what we see from other municipalities.
I think we can come to a, to a, an agreement. Now, the duties of the committee, I think, hopefully put some people's fears at ease. So, the first is make recommendations to the village board regarding the expenditure of funds. So, it's not about electricity or DPW and the design and, so, the charter is just the intro paragraph and then it goes into the details of what it means. So, the expenditure of funds and the design and implementation of village-sponsored events.
How about simplifying it to just making a committee that is going to assess budget requests specific to funds for events and programs that make such requests and leave it at that and have them meet a couple of times or few times around budget time and then let the people that want to put the events together with that budget or without whatever they need.
That's exactly the idea. Yeah, I would think that this committee would be for most active around budget time, making recommendations. But obviously, they can assist if they want to, but it's not meant to replace like the task force, but.
So, what, what, that's my point. Stop there and see how it goes because your complaint, again, and we've been saying this all week, is it's not wanting to have to sit there as a board or a board member. You'd have only so many hours in a day, right? You say. And so, and rightfully so, so do I. And not having to do this all the time. As I said, I don't want the exposure. They don't want the exposure in the way it comes out and everything else. And yet, they're doing, I, I don't think you've ever said they're not doing something positive for the community in their work. I, so.
So, yeah, the, the, the tasks that I have here aren't meant to interfere with anything they're doing.
So, we're trying to boil it down for you. We're trying to tell you what you've written versus what you're saying is intended and they don't match.
This all could have been avoided if you had done an official village.
Liz, this could have been avoided if you had adjusted it correctly last year for events to start with, right?
No, I'm saying if you had created, instead of doing a mayor's advisory group, if you had structured this committee to be an inclusive committee, then none of this would happen.
So. Gina would like to.
I was just called on, excuse me. So, we're back to, this is directed strictly at us. Is that what we're saying again? Because I thought we just said any village-funded event, any village-funded group that puts on an event, where are we? It keeps going back and forth. Where are we? Is this just aimed at the task force and ask? Or is this at anybody that gives village funding and puts on an event?
It's for village events. So, it's not for Bark, which does services and maybe it does an event now and then. It's not for BACC, which has services and maybe it puts on an event now and then. It's for organizations, well, it's for events and whoever happens to sponsor or wants to participate in those events. It's not for organizations. Here's, here's the fourth, you know what? Let me talk about what the four things are that I put in here that are the duties of the committee, because I don't think you guys even know.
We already.
I'm saying it. Make recommendations to the village board regarding the expenditure of funds. Help, number two, help identify internal and external resources and partnerships that can be utilized to increase the quality and quantity of community events, including diverse funding sources, material resources, volunteers. So, that's good. Assistant implementation of build-sponsored community events as needed. Number four, evaluate and provide feedback to the board on events for continuous improvement. So, they'll say, oh, that went well or no, that event's not worth funding or whatever it is, you know? So, those are the four things and it's not meant to be intrusive or slow things down. I definitely, Mark, I hear what you're saying, you know, if something gets in the middle, that's not what I hope for with this commit or plan with this committee, that they will basically review funding requests, review funding opportunities for events and, and it can be other people. Like if you were the person or the entity getting funded, they're not going to micromanage, how are you doing that thing? They're going to say, we, we recommend to the board. The board then says, yes, we're going to dedicate funds and that's the end of it.
That, that's exactly how the arts committee was set up and it became a train wreck. And to the degree that the arts committee wanted their charter changed because they didn't feel like that should have been their role. It even caught up the DSBPA concert series in the mix of it. And Dana, I had asked for a meeting specifically with the arts committee that I helped arrange in the village offices one night because of this big problem that was being created.
That was the first year. They were all new. They were figuring it out and they have figured it out.
But they were, they were growing. We had to change your charter to do that.
They were right.
So, can I thank you, Ben, for reading all your points?
If this doesn't work, then we, we can tweak it after it's made as well.
Well, I see that. That makes no sense to me at all. Might as well, you know, address it beforehand and have something that we all can agree upon. I, I'm concerned when make recommendations, sometimes with these sort of boards and committees, make recommendations become edicts. We will not recommend to the board that, you know, you could have the most sound event on earth. And if, you know, I see that you have, be involved with the, not the funding part, number two is good, but the design and implementation, I, I can see this being problematic and in, yes.
Where do you see design and implementation?
It literally says in your first bullet, it says regarding the expenditure of funds and the design.
Making recommendations.
Yeah, but that's literally going back to what Frank said. BSBPA had one of their events. Their, the concerts got, you know, tied up literally because of the way the Charter for Arts was written. And it's, I have concerns. I want to be careful. The way I'm reading this currently, this impacts more than just the village events. I, again, village-sponsored events is real vague and, you know, at what point will we say, well, again, I know you disagree, but when we, you, when you're using village resources, whether it be energy, staffing, whatever, or just our properties, that to some point, one could make the argument that that's a sponsored, approved event by the village. And I, I just, I think this impacts more people and I think if you can more tightly write this, Ben, and it sounds like Frank's supportive of it, if you can get there and write those things, I, I don't see why we can't just come. Maybe you and I can sit down. I think we work really well together, kind of fishing out things. But I, as it is written now, I am concerned that this will be really cumbersome for our community in a way that we can anticipate.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm okay tabling this for one meeting so that you guys can give me your feedback on the charter.
Would you mind feedback from the events folks?
You guys can coordinate that.
Fine.
And get it to me and you guys can email me directly if you want, but basically, we're going to be working on this and finishing it or, you know, the next draft for the next meeting.
There's no need to table technically. It's not been brought up as a motion here. It's just on this list so we can just bypass the motion at this point, okay?
Thank you, Ben. I appreciate it.
I'd just like to add one thing. Bernadette, you brought up services and resources. Currently, we don't keep track of that with any of them. I think it should be because that's an additional contribution that the village gives and a dollar value to those events that should be categorized and so that people know.
It's on the new form actually from last year that Carla helped provide us. So, we actually do have that now to start tracking. It's not perfect yet, but we're learning on that one and how to correctly use those forms. We've got a number of motions. Let's go through now. Can I get a motion with the property owner for the property located at 40 Glen Street? Be given permission to tap into the village water and sewer system. Trustee Fundesa.
One second.
Trustee Baskin, discussion.
Is that the property in the village or out of the village?
That is an in-village property, Jennifer, right?
It's.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Is there escrow involved? There was.
Not, not for village properties. No. All favor. Opposed. Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the Saratoga County Cultural Society be granted permission to hold the annual Saratoga County Fair at the Saratoga County Fairgrounds from July 18th to July 23rd, 2023?
Go ahead.
I'll make that. Trustee Raymond, trustee Fundesa, discussion. All favor. Opposed. Motion carries. Can I get a motion that Eagle Matt Lee Fire Company Number One be authorized to expend the amount of $5,465.78 for nozzles, hooks and a pro bar? Trustee Fundesa, trustee Cormos, discussion. Yes. All favor. Opposed. Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the DPW's 1992 AFE H10 street sweeper be deemed surplus equipment? Trustee Fundesa, trustee Cormos, discussion. All favor. Opposed. Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the DPW be authorized to sell the AFE H10 street sweeper to the town of North Green Bush Highway Department for $6,800? Trustee Fundesa.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. All favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries. Sean, I'm going to come back to F. I just want to get through the, the circle stuff at this point because we've got to fix a couple of things. I think they're real quick. NG is going to be a little tougher too. Let's go to H real quick. We'll go back to F and G. I get a motion to engage services of Danziger and Marhop LLP DNM to perform Gatsby Number 75 actuarial services for the village's OPEB post-employment benefit program calculation at the rate of $3,650 and authorizing the mayor to execute related documents as necessary. Trustee Fundesa, trustee Cormos, discussion. All favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks for. But opposed, motion carries, thanks to Barbara for getting that information solidified before she left for us.
And they've done this before for us?
Uh, no, this is new, but it's needed for the audit. I get a motion approving the. Yeah, I think we were right for this based on the back report today. Can I get a motion approving the Labella Associates proposal for professional services related to the village's DPW Roger Pearson, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Raymond, trustee Fundesa, discussion.
How much is covered by insurance?
The part, they need to see this before they can even estimate it. And so we provided this to them, the proposal in the first place. But they may need more information ultimately, that will be actually gathered by the proposal material scope. Uh, so we're working on this. At this point, we need to start somewhere to get the information, we need to see our coverage fully.
And then this, the fee for this is not covered by insurance.
It could be, it's just, it's gotta be assessed fully by the insurance company, they're waiting on more information right now.
I'm just concerned about, you know, that we end up with a, having to pay significant amount of money, it's not covered by insurance at all. But I guess if we need it.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Get a motion that Donald Trevor be approved as assistant to the deputy treasurer for the village of Boston Spa effective May eighth, twenty twenty-three. His role shall be in a part-time capacity and shall conclude thirty days after the appointment of a new treasurer. His pay shall not exceed fifteen dollars per hour. Trustee Fundesa.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
Is there a reason it's only fifteen dollars?
It was his request.
We should just thank him.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Ben Basket for the win.
Do, do we have any idea how many hours it would be if it was five?
Not, not beyond a part-time schedule and he's trying to come in for Monday payday stuff. And I'm gonna use him for an assist on the retro pay stuff that we get from the police as well. So we've got some discreet things and taxes he's gonna be able to help us out with as we get closer to that. So he's, he's gonna be used for some discreet things as his time allows. I'm gonna help Melissa. All favor. Opposed, motion carries, can I get a motion that Barbara Bartlett be approved to provide accounting assistance for the village of Boston Spa effective May eighth, twenty twenty-three? Her role shall be in a part-time capacity with services provided based on her availability and shall conclude upon future approved motion from the board. Her pay shall not exceed thirty dollars per hour. Trustee Fundesa.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
Well, how come we don't have like a future motion, something similar to after a new treasurer?
Because we wanna continue to utilize her to help assist that new treasurer, so I don't know what that would take time-wise. So that's why I'm saying, we'll make a new motion when we're ready to see that ultimately, let's just see where it goes first.
And the same question I had, do we have some idea how, how much time should we have given us to start?
Night, night and weekend hours mainly, as she can make time to meet up with the new treasurer. The whole idea here isn't for her to do independent work, it's to train and to show where everything is that that was missing when she came in. So we're trying to learn from our mistakes from the last time around this occurred and make sure we have that guidance and we're gonna pay for it this time. Because that's the right thing to do, somebody's giving up their time and service.
Should we say that it's for training? It says provide accounting assistance. I mean, are they, is she providing accounting assistance or is she training?
I would call it accounting assistance in our village. I was trying to just give a title of some sort here to get it in here. But I mean, if you wanted me to modify accounting assistance for training of a new treasurer, I mean, we're, we can do that. But I also may call her in, maybe there's something that Don can't do and Melissa can't do for two hours, she comes in. So I don't wanna overend this thing either, if it comes down to it.
Want you for assistance and training?
Right, accounting assistance and training for the village of Boston Spa. Uh, the motion was made by trustee Fundesa, trustee Raymond.
Yeah, that's fine. All, one other question, sorry, do we have, we don't anticipate that she's going to work close to more than hours than we want, for example. I mean, you're gonna be in charge of that.
Correct. Obviously, there's gonna be savings for the time being with no treasurer getting paid, so we'll be okay. But the whole idea here is that she's not looking to do any kind of major work. Her main goal is to be the trainer and show somebody where everything is. But if we have an absolute emergency, she's going to try to help us out if something comes up like that. And that's again, appreciation to her for even having that conversation on the way out the door and this whole thing. And congratulations to her on her next endeavor, uh, position. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can I get a motion that the memorandum of agreement between the village of Boston Spa and Boston Spa Police Benevolent Association be approved? And authorizing the mayor to execute memorandum of agreement and any subsequent documents to memorialize this new contract consistent with the terms of the memorandum of agreement? Trustee Fundesa.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Baskin.
Aye.
Trustee Raymond.
Aye.
Trustee Fundesa.
Aye.
Trustee Cormos. Mayor Rossi.
Aye. I just signed it earlier tonight by a vote of eleven to six to one. It was approved by the Police Benevolent Association, was counter signed earlier by Cody Fabian. As such, we are done and the contract's approved. Till, well, it will be at least the memorandum is, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. You party pooper. Can I get a motion authorizing the transfer of funds from the following accounts to the recently approved fire reserve account for the specific purpose of purchasing fire trucks? In A thirty-four ten for thirty thousand seventy-four dollars ninety-seven cents. In A thirty-four eleven for forty-nine thousand eight twenty-five sixty-nine. For A thirty-four twelve dash four, forty-one thousand one forty ninety-four. And A thirty-four thirteen dash four, two thousand eight hundred forty dollars fifty-five cents. Trustee Fundesa. Trustee Cormos, discussion.
So this is at the fire department's request and?
This was, we, we rolled this into the lines back when, when Julia was still around, because this was the rollover from past years. Uh, it's still there. Uh, we went and found what we took out of fund balance into each one of those, that's where those numbers came from.
Their own fire department account.
So now we're gonna roll it from there into that specific account as was intended back when.
So funds are coming out, it's reducing up on balance.
Oh, it comes from. They are already out of the fund balance.
It was already out?
These are in fire, those, the thirty-four ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen are fire chief, C E M L, uh, union and fire police accounts. They're residing in there because we moved it from fire, from, from fund balance to those fire accounts last year. Last calendar year, I should say, this budget year.
Yeah.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bypassing M. Okay, we'll go to O, stop in a second here. Let's go back to E. F, excuse me, F and G. Yeah, I gotta read that, so. Sean, the, the part about American Rescue Plan Act where you call for the motion, I, I think Carl and I both kinda gave the same answer on, to us. That it's, it's premature to go there because we don't know what the amount is and what we would allocate, because we haven't always allocated a hundred percent. You're just asking for a proposal, it looks like here from Labella for that sewer stuff, right?
Yeah, I just, I thought we had already identified how much of the general fund balance was part of ARPA funds.
We, we know it, it's just a question of even knowing that we haven't always, Saratoga, for instance, I think it was a fraction of that, like about fifty percent was from ARPA funds, fifty percent was from normal funds. With, uh, La Birch, it was a hundred percent. It's, it's, it's vacillated in that respect. I know we have the well generator situation that we're anticipating a hundred percent to happen there, that's a hundred twenty-five thousand possibly. So I just, I wanna make sure that we're not A, overrunning that fund, but B, also knowing what we're taking out. I just did the annual for ARPA and it can be very convoluted. We had a couple mistakes from last year that I had to get over that hurdle. We did, uh, it is about three hundred thousand dollars, depending on what we have left with La Birch, just so you know, that we have for ARPA funds. And I'm, I'm not saying we won't spend as much as this would cost ultimately, I just don't know what that number is. And I would caution committing funds before you know what the number is.
So do you just not wanna cite the funding source?
I think that's your best bet.
Okay.
So now I gotta read that motion and be, uh, sure, ready for, okay. Can I get a motion to request village engineer Labella Associates provide a proposal with scope of work and fee to replace existing sewer infrastructure located within Wiswol Park? Including but not limited to design of new infrastructure, development of plans and construction estimate. Provide contract bid documents, administer contract bid and award process, provide construction support slash inspection services as needed. Trustee Cormos. Trustee Fundesa.
I shouldn't be making it.
He just wanted to relish the moment, he just jumped in on his party.
Oh, no, you're all good.
It was funny how it played out.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, we're gonna give that to trustee Raymond. Any further discussion on this, besides who we're getting credit for? Who's on first, what's on second, can I get it? Uh, all in favor please?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I can't call for this motion because this motion as called would be a problem. Ben, Carla said she was talking to you about possibly helping resolve this, because your pick was trustee Cormos. We've stated that the whole objection here is that we don't wanna have any trustees on these types of boards or committees. Because ultimately, there's gonna be their ideas coming to the board, so why have board members involved? And ultimately, let's get more citizens involved in that process. So when you gave Liz as your pick, we picked each other just to basically stop the presses here. Were you able to resolve that?
I don't think there's any way to resolve it without us coming to a common understanding of our vision for how this needs to work. We just have to cooperate. Um, I don't have a problem with a trustee being on a committee that has expertise and history on that topic. So lots of committees have trustees within them, so as a principle, I don't object to having a trustee on. And certainly trustee Cormos, you know, she's been working on the revenue analysis and she was on the original committee. Uh, so it made sense to me that she would continue with that participation. And I think that was anticipated when it was, this was gonna be a, uh, an advisory committee, I mean, a mayor's advisory committee, unofficial committee. So I'm okay with her continuing, obviously we can't have three. Um, so I don't know if you guys, so you don't want anybody. Um, so you, you nominated each other. I don't know a way to resolve this unless we just agree to resolve it. Uh, we could table it for now while we figure out some things.
Well, let me, let me ask a question, a couple people that we know, I think we would all say are the shoe ins here ultimately. And Alex, that thinks I'm, I assume he wants to, uh, you know, jump in here. But I don't think anybody's having objection to having Liz present her ideas with respect to water revenues, et cetera, law. And Peter are here and they're both saying.
That's a great idea, yeah.
So this isn't attempting to prevent her from providing information, it's just, from there, let folks that were charging with this essentially make those decisions and then bring them back to us. And maybe they agree, maybe they don't, maybe they refine it somehow, but more ideas, the better in that one, I would say. With respect to revenue scenarios for water and anything else that may land in their lap, I guess.
Um, if I may say something, you know, I served on the last revenue committee that was founded in, uh, May of two thousand nineteen. And the last meeting, I believe, was September of the following year. And, you know, made some of the suggestions and participated in the recommendations that I calculated over three years generated a hundred and thirty-eight thousand thirty-six dollars um, in clerks' fees, zoning and planning fees, interest and penalties on water rents, water service charge and building and alteration permits, which were the items that we made recommendations on. So I'm also, you know, have a fair amount of financial knowledge. I developed the, 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 you know, methodology that, you know, modeled it uh, for the groups then, and they agreed that, you know, because we had so many broken meters, we should come back and look at this again. Um, I, you know.
Nobody's preventing you, nobody's preventing you from being an information provider.
Actually, there is a difference in being an active member of a committee versus being a presenter. Um, and actually you pointed out, you didn't follow the committee. You're telling us whatever the committee says we should do. And that's not literally what a committee is about, it's an advisory committee. It makes advice, but the decision rests with the board.
I think you make my point why I don't want to. Sure, finish, but I'd love to talk about that.
I'm one person. And I don't, you know, command the board. If they agree with me, they do, they don't, they don't. But to not have me on, on the board, you know, I, I can't really participate fully. And then there's the expectation that whatever the board decides, you should. So it, it's contradictory for me, but.
Yeah. Actually, I was ready to speak. So what I find interesting though is you're the last stop, right? We're board members of this trust, the board of trustees and we do make the final decision. If you don't think something makes sense, you have the right to vote. No, we all have voted, you know, at different points. I think what is important though is if we're gonna be extracting more funds or raising fees or fines or I don't know, wherever we find revenue, we should be hearing for input essentially of the, you know, from residents, specifically who are analyzing this, who have good financial background and presenting it to us. Yes, you can still analyze, everybody can analyze if they want. But I, I think it is wise to encourage the community to be involved. And currently, you sit on the, the ADA, uh, I forget the name of your committee, but you also are on another committee. And, um, you've been on comp plan, you provided a lot of input at those meetings. And, you know, I think people listen to you and you, you often provide a lot of input at different meetings, that various topics. Um, I think honestly, um, it would be a jet, a really nice gesture if, if all board members don't have to sit on the specific committee in particular. Cause it is, it is impacting people directly, possibly with revenue increases that we'll eventually vote on. You will have a final stand and you are gonna present, you, you said you wanted to present an idea, maybe two, I believe you said. So, um, I, I absolutely think that you'll be able to, to participate, to be involved. But truly, I think it would serve the community better to have individuals from the community making recommendations that impact similar people, peers like themselves. So, um, I'm willing to appoint someone else if everyone is willing, you know, someone else from the community, if everyone else is willing to not appoint a committee or board of trustee member, including the mayor. So, um, that, that is where, where my thoughts are coming from, uh, and, and my concerns. And that's sadly, we had to take this route to, to have this conversation, because we wouldn't have been able to have this conversation otherwise.
Well, you took this route, you nominated somebody, so now you're saying, don't do that.
I said I was willing to nominate someone else. If Ben was willing to make a change, nominate somebody from the community, if the mayor was willing to do the same, really it was stock gap, quite frankly. So.
This was purposely.
Oh, yeah, I agree, but honestly, because I firmly believe that you have yielded so much influence on other committees. And really, you know, we're on the arts committee as liaisons, liaisons are different than committee member. And you acted as chair last time. The funny thing is that the last meeting that I was able to be in person, what date was that, April tenth? You know, if you guys had allowed the last charter to remain, the last existing committee to remain, you would have been able to still be involved regardless, but you guys voted to dissolve that, so it opened up this.
No, we were forced to dissolve it.
No, you weren't. This thing keeps, I must not be speaking in front of it. You guys make decisions all the time that, you, you know, that you're able to make, I can't talk, I'm trying. I can't talk. I'm trying to say, but you guys didn't have to. In fact, there was like two or three different motions too, I think, that dissolved it. You didn't, there was confusion as to how to do it. No one forced you guys to dissolve it, but you did. So that ship has sailed. But here we are with a new committee. And we are just saying that it would serve the community better, that it is fully community, resident-led community. And I, I, I'm surprised that you're unwilling to step down for it. I think that it would be.
I'm not a community member. I don't pay.
You are an elected official, ma'am. You are an elected official. You have more decision power than any other resident in this community.
I'm one on board of five. I have no decision power. If the other, if two.
I, that's, that's a false argument.
If other people don't agree with me, then it doesn't happen.
That's such a silly argument. You have power. You're an elected official here. Of course you have say. You make proposals all the time. So at the end of the day, I think you're, you're interjecting yourself a little further than you need to. Again, I think, Ben, I encourage you. I understand Liz has background. But I'm sure there's resident who has a lot of background in financial analysis.
So I suggest we table this because I would need to pick someone else if I was going to do that.
Okay.
I'd like to speak on this.
Yeah, go ahead. So, you know, back in Romano administration, I was a liaison for the ZBA for a period of time. And Mayor Romano also would sit in. And one of the things that he kind of instilled was really, board members shouldn't really be involved in committees. They should be autonomous. I think a board member should be able to sit in on a committee, provide public comment, give feedback when requested. But essentially, when we, you know, in the village, if you want to participate in the village, there's two ways to do it. And one is get on a committee. You want to influence policy that way, you get on a committee. Or be an elected trustee. There's, that's the other way to be, to influence policy. So I don't think you need to be on both. And ultimately, the board of trustees is the final word. And I want to make very, very clear, and I know that this has been disputed. The board can make any recommendations, any amendments, any modifications that they see fit. Because whatever they receive from a committee are recommendations, just recommendations. Ultimately, we have to make the final decisions on what we think is best for the public at large. So I don't, again, I'm just going to say, I don't, I think you influence policy by being a board member or you influence policy by being a committee member. I don't think you have to do both.
I do find it a little unfair that you picked law, Ryan. You have matching hairlines and everything. So I think that's what's going on here. Alex Ciallo is raising his hand and I guess.
I'm sorry, follow on. And then, sorry. Yeah. Yes, I'd like to reiterate that ultimately, you know, we're elected to actually be responsible for passing the laws and using our judgment. And part of that is considering a recommendation from, or recommendations from committees. We, as Sean said, we are not obligated to follow exactly what the committees say. And it is our responsibility to think independently about that. So some people get very upset that, oh, this committee said we should do something and we're not doing exactly what the committee said. Well, that's okay because we are separate from that committee and we are elected separately to write the laws. And we are going to think independently. We're going to bring those, again, those considerations from the committees and consider them seriously. But there shouldn't be an expectation that we just swallow whole everything that committees give us. And so this revenue committee should be the same. We will consider things carefully, but no expectation that that's going to be the final word.
But I, I do want to say one thing. I respect how the comprehensive plan committee handled the last attempt to make some changes by one of the trustees, which was essentially Marilyn, correct me if I'm wrong here. Look, we looked at all this stuff ad nauseam. We, we've heard these things in our meetings. We don't feel the need to do this right now. Please move forward now with the last version of the draft, final draft that we've sent over to the board and do what you may at, at the board level. But we're done and we've put in so much time and effort and energy in this. We kind of know what we were doing with this, what our intent was, and so be it now. And I, I think there's this respect level we have to have when these committees spend months and months and months in these situations that they maybe do possess a certain level of exceeding knowledge beyond us on certain specific topics. And we have to be careful what we just throw to the side versus actually embrace fully in these situations. So that's more, that's more just the commentary generally, not in.
And I agree that I have to take it seriously, but it's, we don't have to follow everything, but we will take everything seriously.
I get it. I just don't want people thinking you come on a committee and we're going to just toss out you.
Right, right. No, we wouldn't.
There were two examples, I mean, three examples. There was the comp plan, like, no, we're, this is what we've written. And the recommendation from, from Carla is to wait until the public hearing. And then if we feel like we want to make, make some changes, we will. And that is our right. And then the other is, is I didn't agree with the, the committee and we charged the $50. And, and then there's the ethics board. Well, you should follow just what the ethics board.
That one's a little bit different because it actually is most applicable to the people sitting up here.
No, it is not different. It is, they are all advisory committees. We respect their opinion, but we are not obligated to take their, their product lock, stock and barrel and not, as elected officials, those committees are a small group of people, each with their own opinions. They may not represent the whole community. They may not have the expertise to consider every, every aspect of it. And that's our responsibility. Yep. And, and as long as that is very clear, I will not be a member of that committee, of the revenue committee, if that's the desire. But I want it understood. If I feel differently about something that the revenue committee, you know, comes out with, I'm going to say it and I'm going to, you know, try to convince the rest of the board that it should be different. And may, I may succeed, I may not. But that is our job.
That like about five minutes ago. So thank you for agreeing.
Alex, you know, we got two Alexes up there, so I'm not sure which is which. Let's do the first one with last name. If you have anything to add, I did ask for your opinion on something. Go ahead. I'm, if you can hear me, Alex, with the last name showing, go ahead.
But I mean, public.
Well, I invited anybody that was an uncontested member to talk for a second. Alex, number two, maybe, maybe went to a different account. Alex, number two, are you the same Alex? State, state your intentions.
Uh, yeah, sorry. This is Alex. My app froze up.
No problem.
I just wanted to say that, well, first off, I'm, I'm happy to be selected for the board. But my understanding is that the committees are to serve as an advisory group to the board. So I, while, while I'd be happy to work with all of the people on the board, obviously, some people like, like Liz obviously has a lot of prior experience and I'd be happy to have her involvement. But to be on the committee itself, it makes sense that the committee would all be external to the board. And so that's, that's my opinion.
Thanks, Alex. Yeah. Keep going. I didn't mean to cut you off. Keep going.
No, I just, I, I don't mean to undermine anyone's experience on it, obviously. And I, I think, I, I've talked to Liz prior to this and I, I hope to continue talking to her as a member of the committee. But I, I feel like the committee, it makes sense to be external to the board. And I think, I think on all town committees, it makes sense that if you're forming committee, the whole idea is that you are, you're, you're outsourcing to the community the opinions of, of other people outside of the board to weigh in on, on policy. So that's my thought.
Alex, thank you. And refreshing to have new names and faces on some of our committees. So thank you for stepping up and putting in the advisory, the committee interest form, I should say. And we look forward to most likely voting you in at the next meeting because it sounds like we're not technically tabling and we didn't call for the motion. But we're going to skip this motion for tonight and in two weeks come back and probably just fix the things that need to be fixed and keep you included in it.
Yeah, I would be absolutely happy to be involved in anything in the community. So.
Thanks so much. Okay, so I believe we skipped F and G. Did I skip anything else before we go here? No, I think we're good. Okay, first things first. Why don't we do comprehensive plan? Because I think so. Questions on sidewalk of where that's going. So am I doing the resolution and title seeker notice of intent?
Yes, if you want to read the whole thing, or you can just attach it to the minutes and say, we are declaring our notice of intent to declare lead agency. You don't need to actually read the thing. It's up to you.
That town of Milton is reading every resolution lately. I couldn't believe it. Can I get a motion approving the resolution for the seeker notice of intent to serve as lead agency for the adoption of the Village of Alson Spa's comprehensive plan? That is to be attached to the minutes for this meeting. Trustee Fundanza?
I'll second.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Baskin?
Hi.
Trustee Raymond?
Hi.
Trustee Fundanza?
Hi.
Trustee Kormos?
Hi.
Mayor Rossi?
Hi. Question for you is, before you take this microphone from me, is are we going to submit this to planning, county planning board now or at a future meeting?
No, you don't have to. You don't have to.
Right. So just to respond to Marilyn, yes, Marilyn, I'm learning. To respond to you, we are on schedule, believe it or not, with the comprehensive plan timeline that I put. I did a fairly conservative one, understanding the, the community. And we are on schedule to adopt the plan around June, July. So at this point, what just happened was the board has the seeker part one, the environmental assessment form. I went through it. The mayor's going to sign it. And we declared they are saying, hey, we're going to be lead agency. So at this point, all of the, a notice of intention to declare lead agency goes out to all these agencies and goes to the county, DC, everybody that, that's actually identified in there. They have, they say, hey, we're doing lead agency. What do you guys think? Everybody's going to come out and say, have fun. We're okay with that. They have 30 days to give us that letter. After 30 days, it's assumed that they have no problem with it. Where the village board is officially lead agency for seeker. Contemporaneously, we are sending the comp plan right now, as is, over to the county planning board. You have to refer it to the county planning board. I spoke with Mike Valentine last week and told him it was coming. He jokingly told me not to wait. He told me to wait until August because he's retiring.
Yep.
And I said, nope, we're going to be done before then. So it sucks to be. So they know it's coming and they're going to review it. What the county does is it makes a recommendation, whether it approves it or, you know, it has issues with it. They only meet once a month, the third Thursday of every month. You have to have it in 10 days for the third Thursday. Not sure we made it this month, but we'll get it in, you know, it'll get in by the next month. At the next meeting, we can likely set the public hearing for the law, which will be probably the last meeting in June, first meeting in July. And then you have a public hearing, board decides what it wants to do, you adopt the comprehensive plan, then you're done.
And can you update that schedule back on the village website?
It should be completely, it, it, there's nothing to update. It's still, we're still on, on board. Like, we're still ready to go where it is. There's nothing to update.
Well, the dates, obviously.
Well, if there's a meeting, you're saying.
If there's dates on there, I can. I don't know if I put dates, actual dates. Yeah, no, I didn't.
That's what I'm asking you to update, just so that it's more accurate for where you are right now.
She wants more notice to the members that you might want to hear, hear and see what's going on.
The whole public participation to inform people as to where the village is at.
Well, once there, well, right now, there's no public hearing scheduled. So once that is scheduled, that's got to be regularly noticed in the paper and on the website, just like any other law would have to be. But I can look at what's on there and, and put in some dates if you'd like me to.
Yeah, like the date, you know, that is going to send this copy of the comp plan to county planning. What's that do?
I don't know. I'm not, the consultant does that. I can work with the consultant to do that, to update it. But I mean, generally, if you look at the timeline as it is right now, if it says, you know, May submit to county planning, it's May we're submitting county planning. It's just not specific, but I can look at that.
Okay. So before I go down the sidewalk, literally or figuratively here, Ben, you were concerned about going for a public hearing because we should be in a format that we are ready to.
I haven't read, it, it came in late this afternoon and I haven't read it. There were some elements.
Last night.
11:00 PM last night?
Oh, she was, she was emailing worse than you at 11:00 PM.
Because I work today.
This afternoon, I sent again the seeker and the notice of public hearing that I sent like two months ago, just to get it.
Okay, that's what I said this afternoon. Yes, I haven't had a chance to read it. So I'd like to read it.
How about setting a public hearing, not noticing it until Monday of next week? And if we have to withdraw, we will withdraw it.
Well, can we tweak anything that we see need tweaking if we do this?
You can't tweak it after the notice of public hearing has actually submitted.
Right.
So that's why when you and I spoke.
You're fine.
I'm loud.
Yeah, sure.
When you and I spoke last week, I said, and I think it was you and I spoke, I don't know, I spoke to Abby. I said, let's put it, we can put it out for like 30 days. You could set the public hearing tonight, put it out for 30 days. It only has to be noticed five or 10 days beforehand. So as long as you look through it and change whatever you want to prior to, it goes out for public notice. We could do that. Or if you wanted to, we just wait for the next meeting, set it for the next meeting, like at the next meeting.
I'm fine with it. I just know there were some things you had to add to it and I haven't seen those at all. That's all. There were a few extra elements. So yes.
I read it last night. It looks pretty good. So I mean, I think whatever changes you want.
I don't know that I need changes. I just don't want to vote without seeing it.
I don't think we want to wait.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's do it. So there's opportunity to make changes if needed.
Can I get a motion to hold a public hearing on May 22nd, 2023 at 7:01 PM related to local law number two? Yeah, we almost did the local law number two as the residency.
Yeah, but we didn't.
Okay, so we'll count it that number. Proposed local law number two related to sidewalk code for the Village of Alson Spa. Trustee Fundanza?
I'll second. This is for the.
Trustee Baskin.
Upcoming meeting, you're saying?
Yeah.
But we're not going to notice it for a few days.
We'll wait till Monday to notice it.
Notice it the last five days.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
What, what, sorry. If there's something big that, or even little that needs changing.
And we'll pursue the public hearing. We'll not send the notice out.
Wait till we talk about it at the next.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Baskin?
Hi.
Trustee Raymond?
Hi.
Trustee Fundanza?
Hi.
Trustee Kormos?
Hi.
Mayor Rossi?
Hi. Lead agency or no? We're done with, we're done with sidewalk and comprehensive plan for your purposes, then?
Yes.
Final answer?
Yes, right now.
Other business?
I'd like to bring up a, a topic about our accounting firm and their letter, which they sent to us and said they would start charging us hourly rates starting June 1st. Personally, I have a problem with that type of contract, seeing that it could completely blow our accounting budget. Because. Because, you know, I'm pretty sure their hourly rates are, are much higher than, than, you know, what we're currently paying them. And so I suggest that we potentially look at some other firms if they're not willing to, to work with us with our existing contract. I also did hear from some associates that they have been dropping a lot of clients. They received a major contract to do all the auditing for the city of Rochester. And we also saw, you know, in, in recent times that they had capacity issues and.
I think it was East Rochester, to be honest with you.
So.
I think it was East Rochester because Bob was simultaneously working on that with our stuff along the way.
Anyway, it's a big contract and that a number of, of clients of theirs were looking for new services. And personally, I think one way to have, to drop a client is charge them hourly rates. So I, I think we should be looking at other firms to, you know, because it could really affect our budget.
Well, a couple, a couple of issues here. Number one, I sent this letter weeks ago. And the idea of to send it to the board is to get feedback on, how do you want me to negotiate this or attempt to negotiate the situation? I don't think jumping to an all out war to find a new accountant is the right first step before you actually talk to the accountant to say, okay, what, what's the flexibility here? What are we doing to make their lives a little bit easier? Because obviously they're responding to the fact we've lost two treasures over the last year. And it makes their lives difficult because of the training that has to come with it. We're also doing what we can to, as we did tonight, past the Barbara coming in as trainer scenario and having Don as a backstop as well. So we're trying to do what we can to solve some of the issues that led to this. I'm still waiting for some feedback from the board as to how to talk to Bob Fox and Tina DeNigro about what to do in the situation. Why would the first thing you do be go shop around when you have a relationship with accountant, accounting firm that hasn't gone wrong? It's really us, not them, that's created the situation.
The feedback I got was that our treasurer did not have the support and training that she needed and expected and that we wanted. And, and that they were not as available as we hoped they would be. And I'm also concerned about the switch over to hourly pay. So I think we should look for alternatives.
But have we had the conversation with EFPR, consistent with what your concern is?
Well, I'm assuming you and.
No, I've not.
And our previous treasurer had talked to them over time about what their needs are and that her needs were not met. Because she was very clear that her training and support needs were not met. And so I'm assuming that conversation had.
One of the things that she left saying was Melissa at EFPR, who, they had somebody leave. Melissa's, when it's that role has been excellent with her in solving our, our payroll issues that we were having. So Melissa McCann, who's our deputy treasurer, has a much easier time right now submitting. That, there were a lot of hiccups that were resolved. Accufund is virtually caught up at this point. That's why you have March reports now, as she had left. So the training that she was most concerned about or disappointed about was the training we were able to or not able to allow occur because she was getting smashed with all the changeover stuff that was going on. And we were learning from that mistake as well. And I've committed my $5,000 discretionary mayor account to go to any training that costs money with respect to whoever's next in this role, and Melissa for that matter, to make sure that they get trained well and are able to handle this stuff. So it's a conversation to have with EFPR first before you go and say, shop around.
Are you not concerned that they've changed their terms to hourly rate?
Clearly, I sent you the email or the letter from email that said what they were going to do. That was my indication to you. Maybe I should have been more explicit with, hey, how should we operate with EFPR?
I mean, I'm asking you now. Are you concerned we'd be concerned about that?
It's not my favorite thing in the world. I understand why they're proposing it. But I.
Why are they proposing it? Sorry.
Because this is the second time we've lost a treasurer in a year.
Yeah, but we renewed the contract as Barbara was coming on. And they said they could handle everything that was happening. They're the ones who told us if we didn't leave Edmonds, they, they would leave us. So they are the ones who caused us to go through a transition.
No, they weren't.
Well, they certainly were. They told us.
They said we will not support Edmonds anymore. So they gave us an ultimatum, take our system. And they knew that we were hiring a new treasurer. The treasurer had already left. So they knew the circumstance and they promised us that they could support us. And.
Yeah, as somebody said in the audience now, she's gone is the correct next step, unfortunately. Go ahead, Brenda.
Well, before, it doesn't mean that we can't take that approach, but perhaps this, can you get on the phone? Do you think this week?
Well, is that.
Kind of point out the areas where we're not.
I can't negotiate in this situation without the guidance of what am I negotiating exactly? Am I trying to get them off the hourly? And are you going to say this should go to executive?
I want to say I prefer you not talk about the technical terms in open session.
We just fucked ourselves.
I, I'd like to, I, I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think we can.
You heard it too, huh?
Just lighten the mood.
Yeah. I think we should try to reach some sort of agreement, obviously not hourly. But I don't think it hurts simultaneously to reach out to other, other firms and find out what they would provide and maybe get some sort of estimated services as a bargaining tool for whatever contract we're, if we do renew our contract with EFPR. One, one thing I noticed is that I don't believe they were able to provide, what they can provide now, what we need is temporary treasurer services. Because they were providing that before and I don't think they have the capacity to. And personally, I was highly disappointed on their performance during, during our budget. They were very unavailable.
I was talking about on Saturdays and Sundays. He was available to me Saturday, Sunday morning all along. What you're disappointed about was his quote that he did not, and their company will not get involved in political malaise. And so if you had any questions to write them by email, they would send the responses by email. So they're documented and they're not put in the middle of a meeting like this where he becomes toxic and political. And I can't say I blame him for that. Okay? I just think that that was the real thumb and we tried to give you access to any questions you had. You didn't have any at that time. And so.
Isn't our contract to work for the village, not the mayor?
He's not working for the mayor, but he was working with the budget officer for the purpose of creating a budget.
But just moving forward, moving forward rather than backwards. I agree with what Sean's saying. I think it would be helpful. I also am very concerned about this hourly rate. And it would be helpful to also look for alternatives as we negotiate with him and then.
I would ask for the board members that are concerned about this to send me emails with what your desires are with respect specifically EFPR, so that I can negotiate. We're not in a public view at this point. Well, it matters at this point. I think we went deep enough and we were told kind of to stop. We didn't stop either. So let's put it in the email form to Frank. Frank will then go to EFPR and Bob Fox and Tina and say, here's where, where we want to go with this and see if we can reach that and I'll report back to you. And if in the meantime, you're looking for other firms to come in, then, I mean, have at it. But in the meantime, I think we need to resolve the current situation a little bit.
What about the fact that they've got a big new client?
Liz, I just said that that client was in existence during our budget process.
We'll put in an email.
Any other business, any other, other business, I should say? Do you want to skip executive session now that I kind of laid that out that way?
Yes.
Can I get a motion that the vouchers be audited and the meeting be adjourned at 10:19 PM? Trustee Raymond, trustee Fundaza, discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Close. Motion carries. Everybody have a great night.